Morning, everyone, and welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, December twelfth of two thousand and twenty-three.
Good morning.
And welcome. And with me today, I have Don Schmicker.
Morning.
Nick Flagel, my pals Mike Stein, this are your county supervisors. Lisa is our county auditor, Bjorn is IT, Luanne is our executive assistant behind the desk. And first on our agenda today is Mr. Todd Kenny, our Jackson County engineer. Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
So I got on the agenda here to talk about the raise grant application. So this is a, an application that's, uh, the Iowa County Engineers Association, they did one last year. Each year they're doing one, they just set out the, well, the no foul came out not too long ago, but um, this is through the federal transportation bill. Um, so you submit a project. Actually, you can submit up to two, um, and then they shortlist these based on several criteria.
Thanks.
I'm actually on the committee that reviews these, so that helps too.
Exactly.
Uh, then they sent out a second list, uh, questions, um, to answer. So long story short, Jackson County has been shortlisted, there's seven counties that have projects. We've got, the committee received proposals from consultants, the consultant prepares the grant applications. We basically decided to award to one of the consultants, so what'll happen is, uh, they'll do a twenty eighty agreement and each county will, uh, have to sign the twenty eighty as a group that we're gonna go together for this application. Uh, Butler County is gonna be a lead county. So what's gonna happen moving forward is, uh, it's one of those situations where we'll have to spend money to possibly get money. So, uh, our portion of the consultant fee will be around twenty thousand dollars. Um, and that'll come even sometime next spring as they start into the work. Um, so potentially we may have to do a budget adjustment to authorize spending to cover that. How this works, uh, if we get the money, uh, it's just like it is federally, right now, the projects, the, the cap is twenty-five million for our joint application, um, our project is, uh, uh, the Iron Bridge Road. Uh, so our, ours is just over, I think it's four million, yeah, four point, no, sorry, uh, six point four or five million. The raised grant is gonna pay sixty-seven percent of that, so four point three two one million. So we either need to make up the difference with our own BR money, FM money, or potentially we might submit this project for that county BR money that we got for, uh, uh, for the Channelworth Bridge, we had awarded that two million dollars for that bridge. So we, we could tap into those funds potentially to get awarded, help offset the initial costs with, to get up to that six point four five million, so there's options there. This project, we won't be budgeting until scheduled to twenty twenty-eight.
Uh, that wouldn't push back the Morehead Bridge?
No.
Okay. So, I guess, if we agree to our portion as a twenty thousand for the consultant, we're not guaranteed anything, nobody.
No.
And what are we doing to Iron Bridge? I thought we just overlaid Iron Bridge.
The road?
Yeah, what else we doing to it?
The bridge?
Oh, the bridge you're talking about, not just the road.
Yeah, this is bridge.
Yes, bridge.
Yeah, I know that would be handy, because I've heard some of the, the snowblower operators say that's one of their fears is meeting a car on there with the blade down, because they have to tip it all the way and rake it against the side of the bridge to make space for the car.
So, I, I question that bridge, or the, even the one that goes over the river, or McCoglynn down by the, on the Preston's highway, that, you come down that corner from the north, man, that is a scary deal.
Uh, which one's that?
Off of, up on.
Preston to, um, fifty-two.
It's that called?
That's Damon Bridge.
Damon, yeah.
Yeah, that one, uh, so here's the deal, um, there's two options for the two million dollars of the county bridge replacement fund that we got awarded for another one. One option is the Iron Bridge, so we're either gonna submit that project, or we're gonna submit the Damon Bridge for the two million. But in either case, they're gonna be, we can't do these all in one year, you're talking, once, we got bridges programmed to twenty-six, twenty-seven, and these two might be programmed at twenty-eight or twenty-nine.
Yeah.
Well, then he's done.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, I guess we're gonna go by road count too somewhat on that deal too maybe or something, it's, it's to try to pick or choose there. I guess, uh, the Iron Bridge is just a little shorter. I, I guess, I don't know.
It's four hundred and sixty feet long, Damon Bridge is five hundred and seventy, Damon Bridge is only has a posting of thirty-nine tons, so it's barely under legal. Uh, Iron Bridge has a posting of twenty-one tons.
Okay, that makes a difference. Um, other than being narrow.
Yeah, so you're talking, if we get two million, that doesn't even cover half the cost. So potentially, we might, if we get to two million, like, say for Damon Bridge, say we apply for that, we might have to push it to twenty thirty, because we're gonna have to let our funds accumulate.
Sure.
Because we're, we're not only getting less than half the money to do the bridge.
But Iron Bridge, with this money you were talking about, and that two million, could come pretty close to covering it?
So right now, yeah, the, the grant, or the, the raised grant would cover four point three. If we get two, that's six point three, the estimated cost is six point four. So.
Sixty percent, sixty-five percent if we add the two together, but.
If we add the two together, it's almost a hundred percent, and mind you, these cost estimates, they require us to adjust to, to fiscal year twenty-eight dollars, so that's a, you know, kind of a shot in the dark. And it also requires us to have a twenty-five percent contingency. So these numbers, I'm hoping, are pretty conservative, like, moving forward, inflation starts to get more in line with what it has been, I'm thinking we, we probably will.
Be good.
Will be good, but, so, yeah, I'm waiting to hear back from the DOT, but what I really need to do is find out, my preference would be to submit the Iron Bridge for the county two million, add that to the raised grant. And if we get the raised grant and get the two million, we can do the bridge.
Otherwise, we can pick and choose at that point, because could we move that?
You can't move the two million, um, but that's, that's the bad part, but the Damon Bridge, um, or the Damon Bridge is even more expensive, so if we don't, there's a lot of options here. The thing with the, the Damon Bridge has the highest point total, so it's all just a priority points, a ranking points, Damon Bridge has eighty-nine, okay? Uh, the Morehead Bridge, we could submit that one, has seventy-eight.
Um, I thought we did submit the Morehead Bridge for, for doing, no.
Channelworth got delivered.
Got moved up, but I thought we were gonna do Morehead after that.
Channelworth is, uh, for twenty-six, Morehead is in twenty-seven, what I'm saying is Morehead is an option for this year for smittle for the two million as well.
Okay.
But it has a lower point, priority points.
Okay.
So they all go, it's just by priority points. So my, it's hard, I know it's hard to follow, but so, the Iron Bridge has the highest priority points, so if we wanna have our best chance of getting the two million, we submit Iron Bridge.
Okay.
But if we don't get the raised grant, the two million, we can't do the bridge without the raised grant, because we're missing four million dollars of the funding. So you're kinda, it's kind of a gamble, I guess.
So we can still use the two million somewhere else if we don't get the raised grant?
No.
If we don't get the raised grant.
Right, because it's priority points, because.
Can you commit that to, to a project and say, yeah, we're, we're depending on the raised grant to complete this, because we still gotta come up with extra one hundred dollars? So you don't get it, I get it. So, and I've been advocating for years.
We get both, we ain't doing anything.
We, if we don't get both those funds, we cannot do the Iron Bridge. Okay, we can't turn around and say, well, we're gonna take the two million that we awarded for the Iron Bridge's priority points, because it's, it has ninety-eight priority points, and go use it on a bridge that has seventy-eight priority points, you can't do that.
Okay, so what happens to the two million?
You have to turn it back to the state.
Turn it.
So you're saying, Channelworth, we got the two million bucks, boom, we're gonna do that, that bump Morehead. You're saying now that Iron Bridge, because of its priority points, is a more need to the DOT to get done than Morehead Bridge, because of track account and all that stuff?
No, I'm saying, we're applying for raised grant for the, for the Iron Bridge, and that puts it in the, the year of construction, it's still gonna be after all those other bridges, so it's in fiscal year twenty-nine. Or, like, say, Morehead is twenty-seven, Iron Bridge is twenty-eight, so if we do, uh, the, this other bridge, it'll be later, it'll be fine, but the, the real issue is, I'm trying to figure out what, what's, what county bridge, priority point bridge do we pick to try and get to two million? Do we try and pick it for Iron Bridge and put it with the raised grant? Or use, like, say, uh, Damon Bridge and get two million dollars to do that bridge? Even though the Damon Bridge points have eighty-nine points, Iron Bridge has like ninety-six or ninety-eight. So, more than likely, we could probably get money for both, I mean, each one on its own probably will qualify for the two million, but you can only submit one.
Per year.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I look at it like the bridge we did south of town, we got the grant, it kinda made it possible, it wasn't possible without it. Iron Bridge, without both grants, how possible is it? I mean, two million bucks won't do Damon Bridge. But if we can kinda get the other one done for free, I say go for it, that's what I.
I, I'm inclined to do that, um, the, the, again, there's things I need to get clarified by the DOT. Um, one of the big things is, uh, you know, this is federal aid, so it's eighty-twenty. So, uh, I gotta verify that this county BR funds is considered eligible match, if it's not, then it, then using it is off the table, we gotta pick a different project that'd apply for it.
So, we can approve that, so, and if, and if it's not, you can't use the BR funds, then.
But we're, this discussion has gotten way off track, really what I'm talking about is the raised grant right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna submit for that.
But it all ties into the rest of the projects we're trying to do.
Not really.
Somewhat.
Somewhat, but really what it is, is we're trying to get the raised money to do, uh, Iron Bridge. And if we get extra money besides that, great, if not, we could, it could be funded, funded up to eighty percent when, when actual costs come in. So, really what I'm telling you is, we're, we're gonna spend the twenty grand on a consultant to have our application for the race smittle for Iron Bridge. After that, we're, we're in a wait-and-see pattern anyway.
I'm, I'm for it.
And we have no idea how big a risk this is, you know, by rolling the dice, that we're gonna spend twenty grand and our, and our percentage of getting this is eighty percent? Fifty percent, there's gotta be some guy, the committee member should know what.
Uh, Iowa was awarded raised grant money last year. Iowa has the worst bridges in the country, um.
See, and I advocate to our legislators in years and years and years, every time I go out there, I said, we got a beautiful county, but you know what, we have six bridges over top of the Pocahontas River, what, what are we supposed to do? We're, we're a county of eighteen thousand, how do you want me to pay for them bridges?
Yeah. Uh, I, I, I can't put a percentage on it, I would, hopefully it's better than fifty-fifty, but you're trying to spend twenty grand to get to four point three million.
I stick it in the.
Well, we did Flat Street, the initial request from the Iowa DOT was that it was supposed to be a mill and a pound of gold, and they were gonna give us one point four million dollars to do it. We as a city spent five thousand dollars to try to get by reconstruction versus an overnight, and then took our one point four million dollars to three point six. The council was screaming at five thousand dollars, but it ended up being the best five thousand dollars we ever spent.
I will say this, if you don't spend the twenty thousand, there's a hundred percent guarantee you won't get any raised grant.
Yeah, that's correct. All right.
I'm good with it.
So it's more just a, kind of a heads up, um, what'll happen is, uh, moving forward, I'll come with a, uh, we'll need to add this to our five-year program and to this, the transportation improvement program, the tip. So you'll, that's when you'll officially, like, have to vote, but in the meantime, we're gonna be, we got, I think we got a kickoff meeting, I think the first part of January with the consultant, you know, we'll have to do, like, you'll, uh, to get a support letter from the board of supervisors, from a bunch of different organizations that all go in with the package, so it'll be quite a bit of, like, upfront legwork for the office, getting information to the consultant to put in the, because we have to work with them on the narrative and try to sell it, you know, be creative, so. Anyway, all right, um.
Try to include it on the water trail, because that has an excellent canoe access, it would emphasize the water trail, we're trying to bring it to Jackson County for the water management.
But it's already there, right?
And we emphasize and help promote it.
Yeah, maybe make it a little easier.
Yeah.
Um, so a few different items, uh, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday this week is the engineers conference, so Jayden and Tex will be out there, so Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Um, just a heads up to the Y sixty-one from Highway sixty-two, just north Andrew up to Cottonville, that gets left here next month. Um, you should be getting on your agenda here shortly, uh, a resolution to set hearing on the three hundred and eighth street paving plans. Uh, so we'll set a hearing, have the hearing, then after the hearing, we'll have a resolution to approve the bid documents, so we can have a letting. Uh, and then also, uh, that won't be next week, but next week, uh, should have final plan approval for the hundred and eighty-fourth Avenue Bridge to here, south of town. And then, I know you guys haven't approved budgets yet, but so what do we wanna do about the tree and brush quotes we got?
Well, Jayden, I, I met Jayden yesterday with a couple of personnel or individuals from the county on a COVID project, and he was talking about that, and I had the opportunity to drive all of them except the one on my ball. Um, he talked about, yeah, maybe the coats are only good for so long, but there's a lot of logs on them roads, but I hope, I hope they took that into consideration, whoever bid it, but.
They're love songs, so.
It, it, it definitely needs to be done, I would like to do it, but like I say, we're so, we're just getting into the budget, I, I don't know that we can answer that, Todd, I.
So the budget that was submitted allows for awarding three of the lower-priced ones. So we could award the three projects, and then if you decide you wanna budget more, we could award the fourth. But right now, we have enough to award the three, three of them.
I don't know that I can award the three of them yet, but, um, you know, that was a hundred and thirty-four thousand for the three, or was that all four?
No, for all four, it was more than that, I think, for three of them, it was around a hundred.
I thought it was you that could do the three or the one.
That's correct.
Kind of, yeah, because the one is the same price as the.
The other three combined.
And yeah, if you're willing to.
So when, so let's, let's move this thing forward, so when are you gonna approve budget? Is it March? So you have to wait till March? So at some point, we can't hold these guys on the line till March, put it that way.
So when are they gonna do the work? Because when you say they're approved.
They could be doing the work right now.
And then we'll come out of this year's budget, we're talking next year's budget.
I think we had it in there, we wouldn't issue payment until, until I won.
Eddie could love that order.
Oh, great, so I guess with that being said, have we looked at this year's budget and see where we stand? Can we do, uh, no?
Our tree and brush budget was not not in point.
Nah, I'm talking.
I ain't gonna lie.
This did, or you guys did, it's phenomenal, I've, I've heard a lot of good things about it.
Oh, they had the clearing stuff, yeah. So I've been working with, uh, the genie?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, to figure out what chemical she wants to spray, because this spring, um, if we need to buy her additional chemicals so she can go out and treat all the stuff we did, so we don't get a bunch of regrowth. So she's aware of that, and I got her the maps of where we done the work too, so.
So I, I guess I also question some of our own guys cutting some of this brush or whatever would be and, and leaving it piled in the right of way, or just go back and have somebody pick it up or anything like that, but I know it's kinda dangerous in a lot of these spots.
Which, which one are you talking about, like, other spots we're gonna do?
No, I wouldn't consider them so much, but just some of the other county roads more brush clearing, like now, like you said, they could be doing it now. I, I question whether we should be doing some of our own more brush clearing and, I guess.
Yeah, so we, we've been doing quite a bit more, like, like, uh.
I mean, I was.
Done with, what?
I haven't, well.
I can give you the maps if you wanna go look at it.
I would.
Send maps to Mike.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I do that, I mean, I like to have, to explain to the people that ask me, what are they doing? I said, here it is, drive down the road, you know?
Well, I agree with that, I'd like to see the maps too, but I've been getting a lot of feedback, just as you drive around, you can see, it's being noticed, because they're like, whoa, I, I ain't seen that in.
I like the tapes are open, hopefully that'll help us.
Yeah, uh, yeah, that, that really, and that's got a wide right of way, so you can kinda really see.
It really opens things up there.
I mean, that's the big hit on the Mill Creek one, if you're gonna clear that one, they said that's just miserable for deer, I mean, the trees are only this far up the road, but for, as far as the projects, I traveled all three of them and they all need it.
Yeah, and some of, like, they're mature trees and, like, we're not loggers and by some of that, like, we were hoping to do this, that number one, it would, I said, I get, how do you eat an elephant? We got an elephant to eat, so we ha, get help with contractor, working with Rick, start to do more of this stuff on our own, with the, with our skid steer, with the brush mower, with our Irish guys going out cutting, but, um, you know, what we do's is, is we, we wanna document what we're doing, then start prioritizing where we wanna go, because we can't just say we're gonna do it all at once, because we can't, so we're just gonna prioritize.
Here's your question on these quotes you got, those are from tree guys, or are they from loggers? Because to me, you know, when you're talking about some mature, healthy trees, chances are, there's gonna be a fair amount of them that could be logged, and on different situations, would we call a logger and see if there's a way that?
I, I would say these guys harvest logs, yes.
Yeah.
You know, but that's why we did it, because I was thinking, maybe we get some, a reduction in costs, because there's some, I would call value trees that you could actually harvest, but I don't, I mean, I, we didn't go out and count every tree, so I don't know, but but back to the question is, how long can we hold these guys in the lurch before we tell them what we wanna do?
Do we know their dead drop date? Let's find that out.
Okay. We'll see.
How, 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 how long are our quotes good for? That, that's what we gotta know. I mean, we can get closer to our budget numbers to say, you know, yeah, if you wanna give up the maintainer, that one maintainer this year, I'd say go ahead.
So you, what I'm hearing, you're putting the budget that was submitted?
I don't.
We have, this is where we're at, is we haven't even got through every budget, each department's path. We're down, I think there's like three.
I know, but I.
And you, from what I remember, your budget was very responsible and surprising with the increase you talked about. The net effect on the budget wasn't overly dramatic, so I would say you got a pretty good chance of most everything going through, kinda unscathed. Other budgets, there's significant increases, so to say, do we know what we're gonna do with yours right now? No, we haven't even got done reading the book yet. And we've been pretty diligent, this time last year, we haven't even created the book yet.
Yeah.
So we're ahead of the schedule, you're just trying to force our hand a little bit.
Yeah.
And at this point in time, we're not ready to, we're not ready to, to play.
Okay.
Not because we don't want to, do I think it's a need? Absolutely. But, um, do we, we don't know property values, we don't know, and they're crunching those numbers a lot earlier than they did in the past, so we're trying to get the numbers as fast as we can. You know?
I think the transfer for property tax was the same for this, for this year, for next fiscal.
Yeah, you did increase that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we don't know what our, what.
Let's just find, call a simple.
I'll find out, but yeah, how long, like, I'll talk to the little bidder and say, hey, how long is this good for, and if he says, well, I need to know by end of January, then we just need to.
So he's banking on winter work, so to speak, is that what he's looking for?
We give him till, I think we gave him till, like, spring of twenty-five. So who knows when he plans on doing it?
Yeah, but you said they couldn't do it now, so then.
Then there should be a little bit more.
Did that create an issue to you?
You know?
What's that?
Like, if they did it in January or February, don't they do it till July?
Do it all the time.
I don't know what that.
They hold their billing.
I haven't deciphered that look, yeah, what's that mean? That means.
If they hold their billing and don't bill us, that's on them then, we can't pay a bill we don't have.
Yeah, we do. If it's by contract, it doesn't matter, if it's part of the contract that they sign, it is what it is.
So you don't have to pay them till then.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not like I'm saying, hey, I know you submitted a bill in May, but I'm not paying you in July, this is part of the actual bidding documents, the contract, so.
So they can't submit it before July fifteenth? That would make it, that, it's just.
See, you see, you see how, you see how on the bench.
It raises a lot of red flags when you get a whole bunch of bills the first of the new.
I like to say, yes. You can't pay for a car in January that you're not gonna get till September. You can't do that, do not do that.
Can't pay ahead.
Yeah, well, you can't pay for a, if you, if there's a, a product, so.
You can get twelve months interest free.
You can't pay for something that isn't here, that, well, is definitely a red flag and will not.
Yeah, that's paying ahead, you don't have to do that.
So we can't do that.
If the work's not done, we're not paying anybody.
Right.
But, and then again, the way it's written, they might not be doing it till next winter.
I would like to say yes, Todd, but I, I can't do that.
Like I said, we we haven't got through the budget, we still got, I think it's.
Well, I'll find out, I'll bring it, if, if, if they're really pushing our feet to the fire, we always needed to sign.
Yeah, yeah, we do, and we will.
I guess we could take from one budget category and feed to another if we had to, if you needed reduce the property tax transfer, but if it's just, if it's not that big of an amount of money, we can just go into the carryover balance too for that.
I like the positive thinking going forward to doing stuff and get that, some of this stuff done with, you know, I like that, and like, people are getting, are saying good things.
We're seeing it.
Appreciate it.
Have a good day.
You too.
Uh, are there any visitors or citizens that would like to approach the board? Online or in person? Hearing or seeing none? Uh, Kelly is not here, Julie, are you available?
I am available. Good morning.
Good morning.
So I believe you have a copy of your request for opioid settlement dollars, it is from Chief Schrader in Bellevue. He has been doing the Dare program in both the public and the Marquette school systems. Um, each year, he has been buying supplies, his funding is tight, like everybody else is, I guess, and he is requesting assistance in the amount of fifteen ninety-three sixty-two. When you look at the opioid settlement documents, it says curriculum, it does not say schools, it says a curriculum that is evidence-based. And I did check, Dare in the eighties and nineties was problematic. They revamped it, it is now an evidence-based, and he does have the updated, I mean, I made sure before we funded anything, um. And so he sent a copy of his invoice, um, and that's what we have. So it's seventy-seven kids in the fifth grade between Marquette and Bellevue Elementary. I called him in.
And is this, uh, ongoing?
He does it every year, um, the supplies, it's a incentive-based program, so the supplies he's buying and incentives will last him multiple years, because they come in big boxes.
From, where did you get funded in the past, or is this?
Um, one year we had extra funds, we funded him, the city council sometimes has funded him, some years he's done it just without any supplies, which of course is not a good program, but that's been the reality. Um, so in discussion, it's an evidence-based program for prevention, and so we thought we would bring it here to you.
And that's under schedule A, which, which seventy-five percent of the money that needs to be expended.
Correct, you two in, in the first section.
Correct. Is that all equated out, we good? As far as the justification and this Wilson thing you're doing, the moment broken, it kinda weird.
It's your decision. I just, when I fill out reports, I have to be very specific of what the intended.
I, I, you know, I, I mean, though, I know he's been doing it for twenty-plus years, probably.
Uh, thirty, he tells me.
Yeah, and I mean, it's, it's a program for the kids, but.
My questioning is, will this classify because it's not really the curriculum itself, but it's more for?
Those are the materials for the curriculum. So some of it, yeah.
Evidence, and G two is evidence-based programming in the school, training, school staff, and materials. Those are the two things under G two that qualify.
And he goes to the schools, both, in both of them, um, and does the curriculum as an act, as with the permission and consent of the schools. He is not paid by the schools.
Now, we did pass some opioid money for training in schools, for, in a, a training instructor, how is this different, or do they?
Well, that was for the middle and high school, for one of the staff there, this is where moving down to the elementary, so a different building, different level of programming, there is an elementary program, it is not a middle or high school program.
And you said it's good for multiple years, but you didn't say so if it's three years, that's five hundred dollars a year.
Well, I, I don't know how many, I didn't ask how many are the upcoming grades.
Right.
Um, so I don't know that, at least two.
If it runs out quicker, that usually means the schools are growing, that's the thing. I'll make a short group.
I'll talk to that. For a motion second to approve the, um, application request for funding, as presented, all those in favor say aye. I oppose. Motion period.
And I wanna thank you, you've seen a lot more of me this year than ever before.
No, we're not.
Um, I'm kidding. Well, Merry Christmas, yes. Um, thank you for working through this, this is new to all of us, and it's been something of a challenge, and we appreciate your willingness to work with us as a community, good, good stuff happening. Thank you. Happy holidays.
Keep moving forward, Julie.
Thanks.
Hey, Sue. All right, if I tie my agenda back, I see that Kelly and Lynn are present, are you ready for us? Are we ready for you? Good morning.
Good morning.
We have Kelly Brown, our Jackson County Economic Alliance Director, and Lynn being our Jackson County Management Coordinator joining us, so. And we're discussing, uh, you don't see grant.
Yeah, so basically, we're to the point where.
Yeah, so basically we're to the point where. We have everything kind of finalized on a bunch of stuff, and we're ready to order. Kelly did a very good job of breaking it down. And. We have the breakdown in the pamphlet for you. Of what the stuff is gonna cost for the E O C. There's other stuff that she's highlighted in there that we talk about. And if she'd like to talk about that, then we can get into the funding of it.
Okay, so the the cover page is just kind of a summary of. The status of the grant, um, right now, what you have in front of you, and. I apologize, because these first two sheets were supposed to be green color coded, and I kid you not, the printer printed everything else that colored green, but would not print those pages. So I'm sure it was a conspiracy this morning, as I was trying to get everything ready. But, um, anyway, so the first three sheets totaled two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, and those are things that. Um, for the county's policy, they're all under five thousand dollars a piece. So, um. As far as the grant is concerned, they're classified as miscellaneous items. What that means is that we don't have to go out for an official, like, public bid or get. You have to very competitive books for it. Um, so what? Basically, what this is, is that this is a reimbursement grant, which means we spend the money, we. Get the receipts, we show proof of payment, we submit it to. FEMA, and then within thirty to forty-five days, we receive the funds back to be reimbursed. So, you know, we don't know exactly how that works with. Whether or not we submit everything through you and then it's purchased, or we purchase it and you give us.
Who's we?
We, as in, as in, well, I'm sorry, Lynn. Would purchase it through funding to the county, or how the cash flow actually works?
Okay, so we have extended conversations over years with Tara. For FEMA, so I mean, she's been aware of this, is on the up and up, and said we're looking like we're right where we're supposed to be. And the management has, management have this kind of funds to. Um, fund that until the reimbursement comes or no?
No, I have. Several year ago, I have the funds to cover the twenty-five percent of.
Yeah, I see that.
So we're looking at. Where do we come up with the money to out front this first? So, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, you know. Were we coming up with that? Till we get reimbursed from the FEMA.
So you get twenty-five percent of the two hundred and thirty?
Yes.
Yeah, they actually have twenty-five percent of the full grant amount, which is the three hundred fifty.
He's gonna cover the the buy-in or the. Their shared portion, but we need to come up with the rest of it. Long as we're guaranteed to get it back.
Yeah, yeah, the, yeah, the the net amount that you will pay in the end will have been your time and staff time. In working through the, getting the reimbursement and processing payments. If that's what you're willing to do. Otherwise, there's, you will not have paid a cent. I'm not saying your time is invaluable. I I'm just saying that there'd be no, no net, you know, no act.
I guess the other point is to to equip this E O C center to to the functionality part of it, we need this. Equipment per se to do it anyway. So, um, to do it right.
Right.
And I think this puts us over the top as far as an E O C center.
Well, and the other thing I'd like to highlight is that we were able to, um. FEMA gave us. It's still within the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but they agreed to allow thirty-two thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars of equipment. Being big displays and computers in five of the offices.
Five of the offices, because we classify them as ESF. Functions, and that's where.
And that's what we talked about last.
Yeah. That's where if there would be emergency event, then those other five. Could, right, could be breakout rooms and things, so, but but then the people that currently have those offices as well still get the benefit of that equipment, so it's a win-win. And then we also have, and I'm not sure how this works out, and I've I've asked this question many times and. But that, you know, there's still money allotted for wiring, there's still money allowed for lighting and for fiber. That if the county can, or if, um, John can detail it out. That that was used specifically for the E O C, we can rea- get reimbursed for that portion of the funds.
Jeremy a little bit, he's getting me the chemistry price and the lighting. That's maybe that, but I'll just go back. Fond her back into this.
Did you have something to add about the wire?
I'll bring in some flavor, so it's two hundred bucks a month, so you'll figure that out. Yeah, and it's smart, yeah, yeah. That's where we're running into a lot of, when we start breaking this down, because before we run into.
So is is this done in this fiscal year?
I mean, we're ready to order.
Okay. Yeah, my next question is, can we do that?
So the original grant was for two hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred. Are you utilizing all of that?
We expect to by the time the grant is finalized and all the equipment is ordered. But for right now, this initial request, because we're still working through some larger item things, is for two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. So once we get that fund, so we can get this rolling. And then we'll work through the out, the rest of the outstanding issues, so we'll be back at another time.
Especially just a drain on the budget then. So, I mean. That's what I'm thinking, it's an in and out. I mean, yes, we'll have to spend it out of probably the general fund. And then get it reimbursed.
Yeah.
You know, and put it back in the general fund, so I would say time is of the essence. Um, we're sitting here almost the first of January, so I would think that we should be able to get it done in this fiscal year.
Question I have is the extra stuff, you're talking about the larger items to get to that two sixty-two. Um, you, the most of the stuff under five thousand, you're ready to order now. What is the timeframe to get that? Cause I don't think they reimburse. I don't think they're gonna do multiple payments. Are they looking for a one-time?
Well, they will, they'll let us do, uh, they'll let us do claims along the way.
Okay.
We could have already done it, but but I just need the receipts and proof of payment, so it's just a pass flow. And the other thing is, it's like, there was, so let me explain this a little bit, what's in your packet. So the front page is the cover letter, you know, kind of explaining the key points. The next three pages are the detailed out of the equipment that totals the two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, which is what we're requesting now. And then if you, the page after that, the top says grant tracking request, and it has green, and you see kind of a brownies orange color. And then there's some blue and there's some red. And what this is, and it's, it actually has a lot more columns, but I reduced them down to just what you need to see for the this point, but. What it does is it tracks, like, the brown is the original grant request that then got amended, and then the green was a new dollar amounts. Because in the course of the last year, a lot of the prices have changed, the quantities have changed. There's also an area, the areas, the line items that are highlighted as red. And the red are the items that are over the five thousand dollars that we need to get bids for. Or they're still being considered as to whether or not we really need them. And there was a large item, which was a repeater, that was for forty thousand dollars, that, um.
Basically, what was, what we were concerned about is when we get that spent billing down there, the radios won't get out. But we've been down there, test them, and our radios are getting out, so do we actually physically extend that forty to forty thousand dollars for an amplifier? To boost our radio signal to send it back out?
Well, you know, I mean, you don't know until the structure's up and you sit and use it, but, uh, it's factory billing.
It's not, I mean, you know, this is something that the bigger cities, what they're doing is they're making these. Corporations put it in their, in their bid packet, it impedes on. Uh, public safety communications that they have to. They've put an amplifier in their building.
Kelly, I have a question when it comes to you said, you just said that, um. So we're gonna order this equipment, we're gonna get a receipt, we're gonna pay for it. What are they gonna need? To prove that we pay for it?
Yeah.
What is that?
I'm assuming that.
So is it just an invoice, or are they looking at an actual check or?
I don't know. I I know before I can have actual checks.
Well, then, we need to make sure, they need to see an actual check, that we're gonna have to make copies, or we send checks out. So we get reimbursed.
Well, and also, we don't know, and we can work through that with you, how you wanna run that, because do you want?
How many companies are you using? I guess, are you using?
There's a big one that we're, that is accounting for a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars of it, but then, or one of that, yeah.
We updated the four-year, five-year contract too with the, uh. Uh, extended warranty, first year, then four years upon.
I mean, this is definitely gonna save us for a lot of money as well.
But but a couple of things just to consider again, is the items in blue. Are the items that if we were able to detail them out and provide documentation, we could get reimbursed. Again, that's the lighting in the E O C, the door entry lock system, and then. Again, I don't know how we do the fiber or whether or not you care at this point, but.
Well, I don't know, I mean, as far as the lighting and things, I would think if we come up with a square footage and what's the cost? That's easy enough to go after. Um, as far as the expense for the fiber. I guess, you know, all sides are gonna have to take into consideration, this is the contract we have, so this is our cost, so what percentage do you want me to? To submit here? Gotta give us a direction this.
Yeah, I think originally, it was because we thought the cost to run the fiber to the building in the room was very expensive, and that's what would be. And not that it would just be contracted out of so much for us. And if that was the case, then, but the bottom line is, so the items in blue and the items in red could be amended. To become equipment, and then we can use them on smaller items. Because we want. Like if it's definite, it's a definite that we aren't gonna use the forty thousand dollars for. The the amplifier, then we can, and I have to amend the grant. And Tara said we can work through that to. Take that out of the grant, and then we still get the benefit of that forty thousand dollars in other areas.
Okay.
So the bottom line is, we really wanna max, we have three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, two sixty-two, five hundred is a commitment from the grant, and the sixty-seven is. The amount that. Emergency management will pay, so we wanna just make sure, and you know, if we. Asked her the questions, you know, we, when they started talking about the tie-in to the other rooms, and I'm sitting there kind of going, oh my gosh, she originally said. If we lifted the roof up and shook it, if it didn't fall out of that room, it wasn't eligible. And then when we asked, we said, but these are support functions, and she said, well, if you can show how it ties in. Then, then, then you can do that, so, you know, if there's other things like that that we come up with, and let's ask the question, because we have the benefit of the money and.
I I I, you know, like I said, I've been involved in part of this, or some of this, along for two or three years, and I sure appreciate the time and effort that you. Stuck with it, I know it was. Stressful on a lot of.
Handle this pass-through.
That's why I just need to make sure what they're going to require, if they're going to require to see the physical check. I mean, we all know banking is done differently nowadays, and we also have A C H warrants, and we have, so that's the main thing we need to know upfront.
You're sure we can handle it, and you guys can get on the.
Yeah, I will make it as easy as I can on you, so.
Yeah, so, again, I mean, Tara's been involved to the point where she should probably already know where you guys are walking pretty soon.
Yeah, she's been great.
Yeah, I mean, she has been a great asset. Rewriting and resubmitting and, yeah, I get it.
So right now, you're looking for. Two thirty-seven, five seventy-three, ninety-two?
Yes, please.
Wow.
Can we amend that, to say, the the E O C grants, so we have to come back every time, we wanna spend above that? Does that move for the auditor?
You're probably better off not to specify what the actual amount is.
No, yeah, yeah, I was presenting.
Okay, just, uh, I mean, because we know that our grant is for two hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred, I think we've, we've known that. And I think if you say a specific amount and you go.
Exceed the the grant.
Not to, I would say not to exceed two hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
Well, can I clarify that, though? Because the three fifty, each time we submit it, we have to show the percentage, so. I'm sorry, we have to show the seventy-five and then twenty-five. So maybe from a timing standpoint, we would need more than the two sixty-two, depending on how their cash flow and on their end, which is why if we could just say.
More than two sixty-two.
No, but I'm saying, though, as far as just fronting it, whether or not you get reimbursed from that fund transferred over or from FEMA. Then that way we are.
Cover, to cover the.
Just to cover the initial.
You'd write a check up for seventy-five dollars, and I have write a check up. It's easier. Wanna pay. And I pay. You know.
That's why if we're asking for fronting, then can we ask for the full fronting of the full grant, the full project amount, which was three hundred and fifty? Knowing that you're gonna get all of it back. Whether or not it's from the grant or it's from. Emergency management. Otherwise, you're splitting funds all the time.
We're gonna have to figure out how to pay for this and how to get reimbursed.
I guess, I I guess that it would need to, we would have to look in, does this grant require proof of where the, you know. Of where the match is coming from, kind of, you know, I don't, I don't know.
If we submit him a bill for a thousand dollars, they're gonna look for seven hundred and fifty, yeah.
So the motion would be for the full funding for the, for the E O C grant. Is that correct?
You guys worked the payment details out.
Yes, sir.
Motion second to approve the, uh, um, funding request and, um. For the E O C grant project. As presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried.
Side is good.
Absolutely, my mission is to.
Thanks for your work in this. Thank you, I know it's been. Kelly?
Yeah.
Uh, there was a question last night, is it one o'clock or noon today?
It is one o'clock.
One o'clock.
Yes.
And tomorrow morning is ten o'clock.
Yes.
Okay. See you then.
Yes. No, nine, ten thirty.
I'll figure out.
Ten thirty, yes.
Okay, uh, Elizabeth or Becky is not here. Uh, Marty is not coming, he's. At the care facility.
Ready. Elizabeth is on her way.
Wait a minute.
Be one of yours, it didn't look like Lisa.
Are you, do you need to wait for anything, Lisa, or are you?
So this morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of December fifth, twenty twenty-three board proceedings, as written by Honor for Smith. And authorized publication in the official newspapers.
So moved.
Motion second to approve the minutes of December fifth, twenty twenty-three board proceedings, and written, all those in favor say aye. I oppose, same sign, motion carried.
I need a motion to approve a handwritten warrant to the Jackson County Treasurer for eleven cents. To reimburse the Jackson County Insurance Pool, which has spun ninety thousand due to a secondary roads clearing account adjustment.
So moved.
Motion second to approve the handwritten warrant for eleven cents, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
We can no balance.
Opposed, motion carried.
The other thing that I need to talk to you about today is that this was an issue that came up last week. Um, this involves the water meter at the new law enforcement center. In visiting with Jeremy early last, or late last week, early on Friday, um. We need to purchase the water meter, Macocana City does not, um, supply that to us. And it was, uh, I'm not gonna say that it was a special meter, but it's a three-inch meter versus something else, I don't know. So we have to buy this out, I had Jeremy do some research, I did talk to John, I went over and talked to the city. Um, this is not part of the contract for the plumber, this is outside the contract, because they never really know what they need. Um, they are at a point that they really would like to install the water meter, so, um, I am asking today for a motion to approve a handwritten warrant to. The utility equipment company for twenty-three hundred dollars for the water meter at the law enforcement center.
So moved.
Very good.
Motion second to approve the handwritten warrant to the utility equipment company. For twenty-three hundred for the water meter at the jail facility, all in favor say aye. I opposed. Motion carried.
We also need a motion to approve resolution number one thousand dash twelve dash twelve dash twenty twenty-three. Certifying delinquent leisure like sewer assessments to the county treasurer for property tax collection in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve resolution one thousand dash twelve dash twelve dash twenty twenty-three. As presented, all those in favor say aye. I oppose, same sign. Motion carried. That is done a little bit, eh?
It is. Actually, we're doing very well right now. We're getting things kind of cleaned up. And that's all that I have to the board today.
Thank you, Lisa.
I did go up to Jeremy a little bit because we talked about that twenty-three hundred dollars yesterday. I I caught him as I was coming in to grab a book. And uh he told me about it. I said, you know, between that and moving the transformer to the tune of twenty-six thousand dollars. It seems like we're having to catch these things when. And he goes, well, there's no way of knowing. I said, unless you just pick up the phone and ask. You know, what's included? How much is it? Because I guarantee there was a quote or something. So I understand why we got to do it and stuff, but it is a little bit hard to swallow because again, we're at almost thirty thousand dollars that could have been acknowledged. Or identified with a simple phone call.
Right.
And.
I I did go over to talk to city hall. I just wanted to make sure the information and I happened in contact with the utility company. Um, who who we're gonna buy this this water meter from. And now what this will do, that will allow the meter to be hopefully delivered and we can pay for it at the same time. So there's no lag in getting it in.
And it's not a special meter just because it's a jail. It's more of a commercial. Registering the flow. It's just again.
Yeah.
A phone call would have been, it could have been included, but it's just a little bit.
But then it's still nice either come out of the original bond money or has to come out of somewhere. So my point is, it's the city's meter. It's their meter to meter the water so we can pay for the water. Why don't they put their meter in?
Oh, that's a scary.
There you go. I'm just saying, that's where I'm going with that. Meter and you want me to pay for your meter.
Clearing their, your right away in their yard.
It's our right away.
Exactly.
That's all that I have for the.
Okay, then, let's move on. And Elizabeth Townsend has joined us, our Jackson County Health Administrator. For department update. Good morning, Elizabeth.
Good morning. I brought you guys some paper. I know. Well, I didn't send these. Well, I made some updates on it.
Okay.
Unless did you print out?
Yours is landscape.
I like the landscape. So yeah, so I added some stuff in since the the board meeting. Okay, so I'm going to be partnering partnering with um the extension and outreach office to. Um, do a one hour private well stewardship program presentation in April. So I'm actually going to meet with them this week and we're going to start planning for that. Um, basically, it's just going to put out information on private wells on their end and my own and then. Um, at the end of it, people have the opportunity to sign up for uh well assessment, water tests on from my department. Um, for twenty twenty-four grants to counties, um, we have earned twelve. Well renovations, two well pluggings and a hundred and twenty-nine water tests. Um, water testing has slowed down. I was going to do advertising the beginning of uh December, but we decided to move it out to January. Because the lab is closed at the end of the month and there's some lack of availability for that. So there will be advertisements on all of our.
Oh, just temporary?
No, so it's ongoing, but I think people forget about it. So we just, we put an advertisement out a couple of times a year for the water testing. Um, the the only issue with it is that I don't like to do it during my busy time with septic systems. Because it just gets too chaotic. Because once we start advertising for this, this will be all all I'm doing. So. Um, let's see, I'm going to be attending the Iowa Onsite Wastewater Association Conference in January. Um, that'll give me some. Um, I think it's in Cedar Rapids this year, so it's a two day. Last year I just attended um one and a half of it instead of going to the whole thing, but. I'm gonna do the whole thing this year. Uh, let's see, working with uh Schneider, I tomorrow I've got a uh meeting with them, so. We got almost all the way through one of my permits. Um, I'm hoping to get that one finished up and then work on some other um permits. I will say it's been really great because they they have like information from other counties. So it makes me look like, oh, maybe we should be doing this or that. So um it's been beneficial in more ways than I had anticipated. So I'm looking forward to that tomorrow. Um.
And you anticipate adding the septic inspections to the same?
So the subjects we're doing, we've already got the septic. Um, I don't know if they're going to allow the well permitting. Because there was something about they couldn't put in D N R forms or forms that were outside of their own form. So I, we haven't got to that point yet. Um. So there will be that and then like the soil analysis applications and things like that.
Can you ask if they can put, can we put the link for somebody to go to and get the D N R form?
Yeah, I can see, or it's possible we can do our own form and then I would just fill out the D N R form or something. I mean, I'm just not really sure yet. But in the beginning, early on, they were like, yeah, we can't use forms that are. Um. Public forums that are already like from the state and this and that, which I don't really understand that.
So if they don't have the D N R at Sydney on top of the corner, that could be.
I'm not sure. I don't really know. I don't fully understand yet, but I'll let you know.
So I guess, yeah, we want to utilize this permitting thing as much as we can.
I mean, that way if somebody is going and wanting to go into the site and wanting to do a well permit and it's like, okay, we can't use ours. Here's a link to the D N R form to get that.
So I want all of my stuff on here. I am actually even going to use it for my own inspections. So I bought an iPad last year and I'm going to be using this, so. Anytime somebody fills out, you know, the application, let's say they're putting in a septic system, it'll all be on there. And then at the end, I go in with my iPad to the site and do everything right then and there on the geo permitting. So I'm trying to ultra utilize it. And honestly, like I've cut back on paper this year, like. I only have a stack about this thick of all the paper. That I'm going to be filing for end of year. Because I've been doing everything left.
Well, you know, I mean, we decided we were gonna jump in this with both feet and I hope it works out. I hope everyone else is using it to. The capability of what we can hope it would do.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I'm excited about it. Um, let's see, so it's been a busy year. Um, we've put in quite a few septic systems. I'm just wrapping these up. There's still some going in. Um, as of last week, this week, there's. Might be one getting excavated, but. So finishing up with paperwork for the end of the year. Um, rabies ordinance, I'm going to make some changes to that. I talked to my board. Um. Basically, what we want to do is create a new ordinance and get the municipalities to adopt it. Because right now we have our own county ordinance and the municipalities have their own. Um, code says that we're supposed to work with law enforcement so that it doesn't define like county law enforcement. Versus like, you know, city. So technically, we should be helping them, but I was kind of advised not to. But anyway, long story short, I want something in writing saying that they want us to. Provide, you know, services or enforcement for them. Um, and that they're going to adopt whatever we put out there. So I'm going to be working on that. I know that um, you know, like Iowa doesn't have a vicious and dangerous dog law. But I've had a lot of law enforcement come to me. They're like, hey, we've got a vicious and dangerous dog. What do we do? And you know, it's getting in, when you get into the animal stuff, it can get. To be a lot. Um, so we're really just going to try to make a very simplified ordinance that's easy to work with. And then if we, you know, down the road in the next year or two, need to make changes to or add more. Or decide, hey, we're going to do some kind of animal control in the county. So you know, we would need a full budget for that, so.
Because we redid ours, it was specific to pit bulls, but we changed it to be more.
Yeah, Macau is the like worst for dog bites. That's where most of the bites come from. There's a lot of, I mean, I don't know what's, there's just a bigger population here. Yeah.
I tell you, when you go knocking on doors, there's a lot of dogs.
There are a lot of dogs. You know, I drive through town, I see them running all around. But out in the county, you know, I do see dogs running around, no tags on them. And it's kind of, you know, there's nothing I can do about it, but um.
But there's no tags for county wise. You're talking about.
They have to have.
The rabies tag. Yeah, I'm talking about veterinarian stuff, yeah, but not.
Right.
They're not registered to the county at any.
Right, right. There's no county registration. So that's something that has to be decided. But I think for now, just getting everybody on the same page with the same ordinance would be beneficial.
There's a part of that is when you get a vac vaccinated and they give you the little tag that you put it on the collar and not throw it in the drawer.
Yeah, they have to have it on the collar, yeah. So, but yeah, like I said, it would be a whole other beast. You know, we would probably need some, like another, like. Part-time employee to do that work because it does get to be a lot. Okay, um, let's see, um, I was recently appointed to sit on the D Mac Onsite Wastewater E P A Advisory Committee. This is for a special E P A grant for onsite wastewater. Um, there's twelve sanitarians uh in the state that sit on it, including myself.
Congrats.
You guys actually, do you have to go somewhere for meetings for that or so long?
Um, I don't think so. I think it's going to be all like Zoom. But I do a lot with D Mac, um, so I'm kind of excited. They do it like all sort of trainings and things like that. They work really closely with the D N R. Um, and I haven't done much with the E P A since I've been here um in this county, so I'm kind of excited to have some involvement with that.
Well, we're happy you're involved.
Yes. Um, let's see, Board of Health. So we recently, so I don't know if you guys remember, the last time I was in, we talked about the little cabins. Out in the middle of nowhere in Sevula. Um, so I took the those to the Board of Health and basically they said, okay, let's do some like specialty permits for these. Um, our goal is to put something ordinance, but we're waiting for the state to redo their ordinances. I'm not sure how familiar you guys. They're all, everybody, they want everybody to. Make their ordinance or their uh code smaller. So anyway, we're waiting for that and then we'll redo our ordinance and we'll include something in there for these like off-grid. Or non-accessible type cabins that don't have water. So we we allow them to do a permitted dry flush toilet. So it's in or incinerator, but these two I did a dry flush.
Outhouse?
It's. It's not an outhouse. You can install it, like some houses actually have these. You can get pretty extensive on them on like cost. I mean, they can be thousands of dollars, like I'm talking like eight thousand dollars for an incinerator toilet.
They're a large diaper genie.
Yeah, or so the dry flushes would be a diaper genie type thing where, you know, you carry it out with you. So, um, but we wanted something, we wanted them to have something. So they're permitted, um, they have a year to get the information on whatever they've installed to us. They entered into a binding agreement with the Board of Health. Saying that, you know, this is what we have. If anything changes or we get water to this location, we have to do something different. So.
You have to buy you a boat so you can check up on?
Boat ride. Probably a good idea. Uh, okay, so yeah, we took care of that. That was good. Um. And then we also have a well that was um so. It's up around a lot of feedlots. It's actually Dave Morehead's place. And he's got a lot of open feedlots on this one property and needs a new well. So we did a variance for him and I only wanted to make you guys aware because it is, it's a pretty big operation. He runs. Um, lots of cattle surrounding this area. So the board did approve a variance. Um, the setback was actually supposed to be two hundred feet from the feedlot and we brought it down to a hundred and ten feet. Um, but I worked with the D N R to put a uh wealth protection plan in place for this one. So they have to really build it up and make it so that it's protected from any runoff from those feedlots. The other.
What about required testing?
Yep, so we're going to require testing um annually through my department. So that he can't just, you know. When somebody does their own water. Yeah, so it'll have to be through our department annually. Um, it's it's covered by grants to counties, so he can get that annually. I know in the past they would be like, well, if you do this. And we're not paying, the grant's not paying for it, but it's, it can be hard to track and it is eligible. So I mean, people can get up to like six tests a year free. Um, and a lot of time we have money left over.
And I think we kind of mentioned that if that grant wasn't available, then it would go back on him.
Yeah. Um. So I have not issued the permit yet because I don't know what they're going to do. So we wanted to just have this in place just in case. Uh, just so you guys know, if you hear anything about a well getting getting drilled out in the middle of the feedlot, it's not a middle of the feedlot, but it's surrounded. Um, then here today, septic permits, we've got sixty-four, um, we've got thirty well permits, one geothermal, twenty-two soil tests. Thirty-eight animal bite cases. Actually, that number is wrong. There's more than that. Um, one in-house time of transfer, um. Forty-six time and transfer reports and four binding agreements.
Um, I'd see the septic permits as a positive because that doesn't tell me there's sixty-four new ones, but they're updating.
There's quite a few new ones still. People are still building in Jackson County and. Um, so yeah, I would say a good portion of those are new builds.
Good.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Well, appreciated.
You're welcome.
Keep it posted if you need some.
Alright.
Have a joyous holiday.
Yes, you too. Thank you.
Uh, Becky, you are next in line.
Yep.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for you today. So we held a couple of special meetings when we conducted interviews for our maintenance facilities, maintenance manager and those meeting minutes need to be approved. So I would ask for a motion to approve the, to approve and publish the meeting minutes from October twenty-third and October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion second to approve January twenty-third and October twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-three. Special meeting minutes as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Good.
I oppose. Motion carried.
And then we have three employees who have completed their probationary period. Their probationary certificates of appointments therefore have expired. So with that, I need to have new appointments approved for the remainder of the elective officer's terms. So I would ask for a motion to approve an authorized chair to sign the certificate of appointments for Sheriff Deputy Nicholas Conrady effective October nineteenth. Twenty-three through January first, twenty-five. Sheriff Deputy Brandon Coin effective November eleventh, twenty-three through January first of twenty-five. And County Attorney Assistant John Bradkey effective October fourth, twenty-three through January first, twenty twenty-five.
Moved.
I have a motion and a second to approve the certificates of appointment to Nick Conrady, Brandon Coin and John Bradkey as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried.
And then with the resignation, a recent resignation of our deputy graver, Brandon Coin will be transitioning from the part-time deputy position to full-time. Um, effective December thirty-first. So I would ask for a motion to approve the transition of Brandon Coin going from part-time to full-time effective December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to approve the transition of Brandon Point to full-time as from part-time, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried.
And last but not least, every year the board sets a holiday resolution to set the holidays we will observe through the following upcoming calendar year. With twenty twenty-three coming to an end, we will do that again now. Um, I would ask for a motion to approve resolution one zero zero one dash one two dash one two dash two zero zero three. Approving the holiday schedule for calendar year twenty twenty-four.
Uh, it's the same as you sent in the email, correct? No changes on that?
No changes.
And just to refresh my memory, what's the purpose of the three floating holidays?
So those were established a very long time ago when there were further days that we didn't observe Martin Luther King Presidents' Day, some of those things that if employees still wanted to take them off, they could. They've turned into basically flex days. Um, it's been three for a long time. We adjust them sometimes and we can't. It was five because we didn't close to observe two holidays, Christmas Eve Day and New Year's Eve Day. So there are some years we make adjustments, but by default it is three.
I didn't realize those became holidays, Eve Day.
Eve days, yeah. I think they were negotiated.
So moved. Motion and a second to approve the holiday resolution number as you presented. All those in favor say aye, don't matter. I I oppose, same sign. Aye, aye, opposed, same side, motion carried.
So I will leave six of these, two copies of each for you to sign, Mike, you'll bring it to me, minutes go back to Lisa and hopefully she's got the resolution on paper. That's all I have, unless you had anything for?
Alright.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so Lisa has presented, Luanne?
No, we're.
Lori, oh, wow, I looked right over top of you. Excuse me and welcome, so Lori Relling, uh, from Jackson County, or Jackson County zoning administrator, good morning.
Lori. So, how about we start with the?
That was a test.
What kind of test to see if I just walk, start crying? Uh, anyway, can we start with the, the property at Leisure Lake that's asking, requesting an extension for their abatement project? This is gonna be the one on Klein Street. This is probably the largest abatement project in Leisure Lake, it's by volume. And he's asking for an additional, um, extension, which I believe this is the.
Is this original or is this updated?
This is updated, this, oh, oh, that's something else, that's, yeah, we're not there yet, Brandon, or Brandon, or brother, Bjorn. That one's. Oh, that is, okay, go ahead.
Which one you want?
Yeah. Uh, that's just, uh.
I guess.
That's the most recent one, there's, uh. Yeah, I apologize, thank you. Yes. Sorry, they have run together after a point and I thought we were on.
So, has there been improvement?
Yes, yes, it's slow improvement and here's part of what's going on up there. This is, this guy has a huge heart, there's a lot of people out there that need help. He is like the guy they call when they need help. And there's been some people with poor health that he has helped. Uh, he's helping with other people's abatements, his is getting done slowly, but. He is the go-to guy that just seems to have a big heart and is helping.
Is he helping other people bringing it back to his place though?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Picture that you showed, that's the same property, correct? Okay, so is this what we discussed, I mean, six months ago, or maybe about a pallet business? Is that the case?
This, yeah, this actually started.
So we have more things.
We have more things go, this has multiple layers to it, this is an onion. Uh, it, they are making progress, part of it is, he has to have a place to take these to get rid of. So he's, he's basically, is, he's moving up, selling them off, taking loads at a time, but there's a lot of loads there. This, from my understanding, this actually, and I can watch it with the aerials, the progression of the aerial photography. This actually started in about two thousand. We all know that a lot of things changed after March seventeenth of two thousand and. There was some issues and everything was moved out to this location is my understanding. The day of COVID issues. Twenty twenty, oh, excuse me, that year.
Two thousand, like.
Two thousand twenty, excuse me, twenty twenty.
Is there a business being operated out of this location?
Probably.
Potentially?
Yeah. Yeah.
And that is not within zoning?
Correct. And that's why it's like we need to get this cleaned up.
So we're addressing that also.
I'm addressing it on the nuisance side of it.
Okay.
I mean, we could go at it after that and, you know, another. It's another viol- it is a violation, it's another violation. And, uh, which reminds me, um, just. We'll talk about Leisure Lake Property Owners Association too.
So I'm gonna go on a recommendation here, if you think there's been progress and it's still gonna uh, uh, go on that way as progress, um. You recommended the extension?
Yes, sir.
For thirty days?
Yeah, but I have a feeling we're gonna see him back.
I mean, we still have to see progress.
Yes, sir.
Progress in a game plan, that's consistent. And, you know, that's consistency, I mean, progress isn't, I took a load of wood out, got rid of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, when you say looking for a place to take this, I can see there's some decent material there, but then I can see a burn pile material there too.
Yeah, well, basically it's not, okay, when I say a place to take it. Somebody that's willing to take it, you know, market, sell it, pull it off and get rid of it.
Well, that doesn't mean I'm cleaning up, that means I'm selling things off and moving at the pace of commerce.
Well, it also to clean it up, but he's not bringing in more to replace it either. Which has obviously happened in the past.
Selling off all them pallets could be a year.
Well, that's.
And, well, again, is it our nuisance prob- problem? It's our nuisance problem, I'm not saying that way, but I'm saying. He can't keep it around, you can't say, well, I'm trying to sell this junk, this junk. Miscellaneous stuff. Whatever it is, you know, he could have an abandoned car there for sale and not ever sell it. Right.
And if there's a continuation of the business, there will be a continuation of the nuisance.
Yeah, but he's not bringing more stuff in.
But I guess what we're saying is I'm not for giving an extension. Month after month after month here because he can't find an outlet to sell it.
Okay.
Then you need to get rid of it some other way.
Guess the point is if it's not marketable, it needs to be.
Okay, and just keep in mind, he's asking for an extension, there's plenty out there that have done any, I mean, have made.
I get that.
Prove the extension based off your recommendation, but there needs to be conveyance of an understanding that we are not going to wait at the most, at the speed of commerce. Everything can be bought or sold.
Right.
And that includes junk, that includes burns, I mean, so there needs to be a defined endpoint.
Okay.
Cause there will not be a continuous supply of extensions.
Okay.
So.
What's the date until?
Thirty days right now, till we see improvement or so.
So are we going to the middle of January?
Say the end of January now.
Can we go to the thirty-first then, Dan?
Sure.
That's the motion.
Please.
Second.
Motion and second to extension until January thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same side, motion carried.
Okay, and, uh, I gave you the information of the property owner up there on Orange Street. That is asking for reconsideration of some of the violations and to, to. Maybe say that they're not a violation, uh. The first, that picture there, uh, they weren't able to take any of the, the two pontoon boats out this year. But the blue one will be back out next year.
Outward.
Out on the lake, uh, the white one, uh, they're saying, uh. They used to take two at a time out because they had a big family, but they, they'll probably be selling the white one. But they're just saying that those are not nuisances, they just, but they have not been moved, they didn't get moved this year for other reasons. But, uh, they'd like for the boats not to be considered a nuisance.
Registered?
Leisure Lake split, John, can you help, or Don, can you help me out with Leisure Lake, um, there, they don't need a state registration to be used in.
It's private property, so private property, you can use your own boat on your own pond, just like you don't need a fishing license to fish your own property.
Okay.
But. Soon they'll take it out of your.
Right, and that's all, that's where it stays is my understanding is.
I think they have to be registered to the Leisure Lake Association.
Yeah, and this guy would be.
Well, I mean, I can't see that, we can say that's a nuisance that they're usable.
Would be sold this, this spring.
Okay.
Again, it isn't so much do I have a problem with the boats per se, though.
Right.
Just.
As long as, I guess, I would like to see you maintain around them then.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, and that would be, okay?
Cause it looks very well maintained right up to that stuff, so.
We need around your boats, keep them, you know, you don't want, obviously, if you got trees growing up in between the pontoons.
You, you cited the violations, were the boats just a violation or was the other stuff?
Well, there's more, I'm just starting with one thing at a time here, but yeah.
I'm assuming you know what we're talking about here.
Yeah, so the boats, the boats is one thing they asked for reconsideration on.
Yeah, it would reconsider.
And I'm.
Depending on their progress with the other stuff.
Okay, and I understand that the, the tires, the cooler are already gone, uh, so that's been cleaned up. The spool is another thing they're asking for reconsideration on.
I spread that, I mean, you can obviously use it for picnic table, but you can't use it like that.
Yeah, well, they're looking to re- redecorate it and paint it and move it to their, their house property.
So we don't need to reconsider it if it's moved to a property and redecorated and stuff, it's not.
But it probably won't be done now.
Right.
So they're looking at it, so that's where. That's why I'm.
Serving a useful purpose, I'm okay with it being that.
Okay, but it's, as of right now, it's not.
As the way it.
As of right now, they put their picnic table in storage over back by the tree. But come next spring, if it's still back there. Then it's gonna be.
Okay, so I should keep this one open until spring to see what happens to that?
Yep.
Okay.
They're probably gonna use the cooler with the picnic table.
They've already removed that. I'm told, um, I talked to him yesterday, I have not been out there since, uh. But every day it snowed and right after that, um, this has been sold, there, it should be like off the property next week.
Okay.
And then there was some concrete blocks, which, um, I'm not seeing in a photo, uh, that they're asking for reconsideration on. Uh, because they're using those for landscaping on their property on the other side of the road.
Can you see that happening?
They are working on landscaping at the property on Cedar Street.
Again, that's, if they got concrete blocks, even the picnic table, it's, if it's cleaned up around it and it looks like it's being maintained and purposed. That's fine, if it looks like it's growing in weeds and it hasn't been moved in years.
Right.
Then that becomes defined differently.
Okay, got it, yeah.
If they have the blocks neatly stacked up against the wall with something and it looks like it's being used, okay, that makes sense. But if they're just chucked in a pile out in the yard and weeds are going through it and vines and all that stuff and they're covered with. No, that doesn't.
Progress, right, okay.
Because we've all had projects that you went and got things for and you're like, oh, I'm gonna do this and oops, time got away from me, that didn't happen. So, again, but we don't throw it all over our yard and just leave it lay.
Right, absolutely, so, absolutely, thank you guys, I appreciate that, um, also, I just wanna just. Give you guys this real quick, this pertains to nuisances, just as a reminder of what was sent out to Green Island. Alright, and that went to every property in Green Island. Oh, before we go there, I gotta show you guys a good news project. Look at that, is that gorgeous, go ahead, uh. Yeah, let's see the befores on that. Yeah, well, there should be. I cried, they get loaded, I'll tell you what, you guys, that was a horrible, horrible, messy, nasty place. It had junk vehicles, washing machines, motor homes. Decaying buildings, uh, trees growing up between different items. That is, we had the biggest, even see how excited I am, we had the biggest smile on our face when we drove through Green Island, or excuse me. Leisure Lake, I'm sorry, I got Green Island on the brain, uh, when we drove through Leisure Lake and saw that was clean. They actually hired a co- uh, group of guys from Dubuque to come in. They not only got stuff out, they got it out in the winter, they got it out in snow and. So there's, there's beautiful things being seen up there, just, I had to share this one because it was so. And I'm sorry the other ones didn't get, the before pictures didn't get added to that, but it, it was a sight to see. Uh, but anyway, the other. Actually, two others. Owned by the VA. That one's owned by the VA.
Cool.
Yep. Yep, it got, it went back.
Compliance? No, thank you.
To the VA, I don't even know that they got our notice.
That's fine.
Or accepted it.
Okay, what's next?
I just wanted you guys to see this letter, remind you guys what was actually sent to the.
So this is a broad overall, so when you sent some to specific owners. There was, um, certain things identified like the. Van, motor home, that was not identified?
That was not, this is what Green Island property owners.
So, they, they weren't specifically said that that item itself was a nuisance.
That is correct, this is what they received.
Thank you.
There, there is one down there that did get a regular violation because it was one that was started earlier in the year. And I felt that we've learned a lot along the way, uh. You know, we've sent out a hundred and some notices this year, um, we've learned along the way, this was one of my first ones in Green Island, not. The one, the specific item that you guys are having in mind, but, um, another property on this, on the south end going towards the railroad tracks. Um, but anyway, it was, there was a couple of things in there that were probably not clear, so they've been reserved. Alright, but it was not the, the one that you have in mind.
And I did talk to the one resident and it was questioned if other people got the same. Letter and I said just, then go off to everybody down there.
Was that the property owner or somebody else?
It was the prop, it was the person with.
The concern?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
It was brought up other properties and I said every, this was a cover letter for everybody. That this is coming, so work on getting, yeah, things cleaned up if you have violations.
And just so you know, this was what was the original Clarkstown, Green Island, this, the platted area. The stuff on the fringe of that did not get this letter. So.
Okay.
And if you guys need to see a map of what got the letter, I'd be more than happy to send you guys that.
Okay.
Okay.
Around the outskirts of Green Island in violation?
Yeah, probably, uh, and here's part of what my issue is. There was a big violation in a previous board of supervisors, and I don't know if you were part of that, Mike, that's why I'm kinda trying to tread lightly. Allowed this property owner to put up a fence, a. Makeshift metal fence to hide what was behind it, instead of cleaning it up. Vehicles, cars, wreck cars, tires, and. They allowed that to be camouflaged. So I don't know how to open that back up when they would actually be in compliance with what that board of supervisors allowed them to do.
So that initial property was inspected several times by law enforcement and by zone, previous zoning and. Um, it was claimed that they were in, um, the parameters that a lot of this equipment was used for. Items were used for its farming operation and or business. And, uh, it was, it was actually visited several times by law enforcement, so. Uh, as far as neglect and whatnot to animals and not, not to be true.
Right.
So I don't know what else to do about it, we were involved with the situation. Forty years ago, that said if you planted a row of trees to basically hide it. It was okay, so, you know, if, if, if you say that you can keep it out of eyesight, I can't. I can't tell you how to live, I'm sorry, I can't tell you how you wanna live.
Right.
That's not the way I would do it, but I can't tell someone else that you gotta live like.
The same time, it's, we have disassembled junk vehicles, unregistered vehicles, inoperable vehicles. Tires galore, and that area floods, um, it gets. Um, it gets water, I mean. The, the breeding of diseases down there, you know.
Asking specifically about this property, what I want is we're gonna do this to Green Island. But if it's surrounded by a bunch of houses that don't have to live to that same standard, it's still guilty by association.
Okay.
You know.
So I do think that. For. Our code or whatever it is that says you have to have a written complaint.
So that's, yeah, that's where we're, when we're doing it with a blanket, no, and it's not by code, that was by practice. Because of.
But does not, if within the platted area of Green Island.
And that was the way I was able to. Like Leisure Lake, it was properties within Leisure Lake Estates. That was how we got with, that's how we did that, Green Island, I can actually narrow it down to a geographic area with. With similar legal descriptions. And that's how I did that, but if you want me to reach out further, I'd be more than happy to.
I think you've got your hands.
I think I do too, thank you.
Get wrapped up what we got going and.
Thank you.
We'll go from there.
Okay.
As far as I reached out while we were here. There used to be, and I don't, don't wanna quote the person on if it's still there or not, but a place into it that you could get rid of pallets at. South of the tracks, I don't know if that gentleman knows that or not, but.
I mean, I guess, you know, I mean, I don't know if they're tech savvy or. Use any of that, but the, uh, social media thing goes pretty quick, them kind of items most of the time, they have anybody that can help them out, but. Usually.
You guys are two different things right now, I think, though, right?
Well, that we're going, she went back to Leisure Lake.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay. Alright, but yeah.
Cool.
Yeah. And someone suggested, uh, some other things with pallets too, but, um, but yeah. But anyway.
Alright, we appreciate the update, anything else?
Not right now, oh, I have been in contact with some people, other zoning administrators. I was trying to find some memorandums of for carbon pipeline, pipelines, uh. Utility, scale solar, and I'm, I'm. I thought I had a guy that was gonna send me their carbon pipe, pipeline one, um, and I could, cause I couldn't find it online, it wasn't available, but I haven't received it yet. And then I talked to him Friday after.
Okay, well, when that happens, bring it in, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good holiday.
Thank you.
And it appears that Mr. Jeremy Oden from Midwest Construction Consultants. Is available to give us a law enforcement center, morning and extension building update.
Good morning.
How's everybody doing?
Good. So I've got some kinda exciting things going on today, um, they got the rooftop units going this morning, finally. So we've got some heat in the building, it's gonna take a while to heat up in there, so I'm still blasting some propane, trying to get the walls warmed up. Um, the painters have got color on the walls and the administration. Um, they've still got a top coat to put on, but I held them off on that for now because there's still quite a bit of work going on above the ceilings. And there's quite a bit of materials in there, and as careful as everybody's gonna be, I can guarantee they're gonna ding something up, and so. Wanna get all that done, get everything out of there, and then come back in and, you know, spackle any bruises or anything, and then, and then top coat that. Um, they did, with the heat going on, they were able to move directly back into the jail this morning. And start doing block filler on the walls back there, I didn't want them to get away from me. Uh, you know, how it is, trying to get people back once they leave, you know, so, um, got them doing that and everything. Um, just a lot of other normal, uh, mechanical stuff still going on. Uh, Geisler's putting their line sets to the VRF units in the admin, they're gonna be a while on that, so. Electricians running conduit, uh, had some guys out sick this week, had one guy with COVID. And, uh, a couple of other guys were sick and, and then another guy sat down at the fairgrounds was sick too, so, um. I wanna go try and get the striping done on the parking lot this week at the jail, since the weather's gonna be cooperative, I'm gonna call him when I get out of here. Um. So I talked to John a little bit more too about this water meter deal and everything. It's really rare for a municipality to not, uh, supply the water meter, in fact, most times they wanna come and put it in. Like even on my last job, they were adamant about, they put it in and everything. Even if we would have known about it, you wouldn't know the sizing of the water meter and you wouldn't know the pressure, so you wouldn't really know what water meter you needed. And if they were to put that into the contractor's contract, number one, they wouldn't know how to bid on that component. And if they did supply it, they're gonna mark it up about twenty percent anyway, so I mean, in the big scheme of things. It saved the project money, actually, by buying it out.
We already approved it, so.
Pardon?
We already approved it, so.
I just trying to give you a little.
And it was their meter and we're buying their meter, but so they can charge us for what we use, so I mean, we.
I don't agree with it at all, and I've never seen it before, and I asked John this morning, I said, have you ever seen it? He goes, yeah, I have. He said, it's been a long time, he said, it's, it's rare.
Same way with the, if people putting in solar. Um, if you do it out in the community, it's like either free or a two hundred and fifty dollar thing, but a McCoke is like seven hundred and fifty bucks to get the meter changed over, that can go both ways. It, it's, so.
Well, and I, is that gonna apply to us out there too? I mean, you're probably gonna be getting a bill for that, I presume.
Yeah, is it hooked up yet?
Yeah. Yeah, last Thursday, they shut our power down for about four hours and we got it hooked up, so.
So it's functioning?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah.
We would know.
I, I haven't talked to Blue Sky, I mean, it, it's, it's hooked up, I know McCoke and Electric, you know, they were out hooked it up, so.
I think it only, the two-way meters, if you ever sell power back.
Yeah.
Oh.
And like I said before, I don't have any experience with solar, so I mean, I really don't know anything about it too much, but I guess it, it looks good.
It does look good, I mean.
I like it, I like it.
Yeah, yeah. I do think, now that I've seen, you know, it drained really well down through that valley that, that, uh, Steve Clocky, uh, created. And now that we've had some water down in there, it appears that it has settled a little bit, we might have to come back in next spring or something and put some more dirt. In there to get it to drain, I think you're gonna get a pool of water underneath those panels right there, but. You may choose to put some rock under them or something, so you don't have to mow anyway, you know, I don't know what.
Yeah, we'll have to figure out what we put underneath them, man, so that, we can't expect somebody to duck underneath them, but.
Yeah.
We talk about fish pond there.
Yeah, I think you're gonna need some more dirt probably under there, so, yeah, koi pond or something, yeah, so. Um, so with all that, um. So the fairgrounds has come along, um, it's painted. Uh, the rest of the glass got put in, uh, the wood doors went up the other day, well, some of them, they're still in process of that. Um, we rejected the epoxy. And Peak, even their general contractor, they, they said we, we wouldn't approve that, no matter what, they fired you. They gave him every opportunity to come back and make corrections, and he said that was as good as it could get, and so they fired him. And at their cost, they are hiring another company to come back in and redo it, and they, they've started on it. Um, there was just a lot of, down where the wall met the floor and everything, there was, there was clumps, you know. It was just substandard work, there was, uh, places that didn't have enough of the clear poly, there was other places that had puddles of it. And, you know, I talked to those contractors many times about, you know. What I expect and what I've seen in the past and everything, and they weren't able to deliver on that, so, you know, it's gonna back up the. The time on finishing that a little bit, but it's gonna be a much better product, so what they're doing is they're actually gonna go in there. They're sanding down everything, uh, and then they're gonna, it'll actually be a thicker, more durable product when they're done. Because they're using that as a base, they're not taking it all off, but they're, they're sanding the clumps and everything. And then they're gonna come back in and refleck it with the, the thirty-second inch flakes and then, and then recode it and everything, so. I know they're waiting on some materials and stuff, but, uh.
Is this everything, the, uh, offices, the hallway?
No, it's the, the bathrooms, the kitchen. Which goes up the walls in the kitchen, um, the, the big bathrooms, there's one small bathroom. And then the storage room behind the kitchen is on the floor, so it's quite a bit. They've got, they've got a lot of work, and it's costing Peak a lot of money, but they, you know. Chris Chico told me, he said, he said, I would have rejected it whether you accepted it or not, he said, this is not how we do business.
Isn't what their name associated with.
Yeah, and I said, well, that's great, because I wasn't gonna accept it, you know, so, glad we're on the same page here, so. You know, it's gonna back the time up a little bit, but it's gonna be really nice when it's done, so.
We hope so, yeah, well, that's, uh, we have some pretty good news there.
Cool.
I'm glad to hear that the rooftops are working and.
Yeah, yeah, so far, so good on all that.
Sounds like progression.
Derek Kenneke, uh, was down at the fairgrounds last Friday, placed all the gravel, done a real nice job for us down there. Um, I was working with Lisa on this, so we did run the gravel, the purchase of the gravel through the county engineer's office. And so I need to get those invoices from them, get them to John and, and all that, and I don't know how many loads they ended up with for sure, I think about fifteen. But, uh, we'll get that handled and everything, so, um, one other thing real quick, I wanted to. So I've been working with Lynn, uh, the EOC director, he come to me with, apparently, he's got some grant money that he can capture. And so I'm working with the contractors, um, uh, stronghold to get prices on, broke out on the locks and the doors. Working with Paul Crowman, getting the prices broke out on the cabinets that go in there, and then he mentioned the lighting, so I'm gonna.
Lighting and fiber and electrical, that goes.
Ah, electrical, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna.
We can figure out a way to break the fiber down is to that portion of it, um, but, you know, again, we're leasing.
We may need some help from your guys on that too, Bjorn, and. I don't know how you break down two hundred dollars a month for just that portion of the building. Yeah, the big ones is gonna be the locks and, and.
The rolling cabinets.
Well, there was, there's no rolling cabinets in there.
There's only one that was.
Yeah, but part of that grants of the storage in other places.
Oh, and I need to talk to Lynn, I need to talk to Lynn a little bit more about this and everything.
But yeah, we, we got a bunch of that stuff.
I was gonna call, try and call in today, get a little more clarification on that, so I think that's gonna be. You know, he said that could go back into the general fund and everything, so that's gonna be a pretty good shot in the arm right there, so.
Yeah, we discussed, we'll get the pass through and. Yeah, I, I, they mentioned that they were working with you to break down some of the.
Yeah.
I mean, like I said, like Bjorn said, it's tough to do that, but, you know, if you can go by a square footage, or if you can go by the number of units you're using. For something like that, I, I don't know, what's logical, what's acceptable to the FEMA, FEMA side of it.
See, I don't know, but the other, you know, the other components, the, the security frames and locks and, and lights and stuff like that should be easy enough. To get some pricing on that, so.
Appreciate it.
Well, yeah, for sure, so, okay, any questions or anything?
Well.
One question I got, and it's kinda juggling the. In January, is he taking off again, or is he gonna be around this way?
No, I think he's going on vacation.
Okay.
But he works on his computer every day from down there, so he's just not physically available.
Okay.
But he could do Zoom meetings and stuff like that, so. Yeah, he's the only guy I've ever worked with, he was on vacation, works every day while he's on vacation, I don't know how hard, but, you know, so.
I guess we lean on you a little bit.
Yeah.
That, I'm used to that.
Yeah, we're good with that, so.
Yeah, I appreciate the call, man, yeah, yeah, I scolded all the guys too, I was like, and I. I missed it too, I guess the door didn't get wired shut on Friday, we've been u- using that door to throw stuff in the dumpster. And then, you know, we secure the building at night, well, it just got overlooked and everything, so, I went out there as soon as he called me and wired it shut, and then called me on Sunday. We had a door open, which sucked a bunch of heat out of the building and everything, I was like, you know, that's real.
It was a little warmer around here.
You know, so. But, we'll, uh, make sure that doesn't happen again, so.
I just, well, didn't want anything to be.
No, I'm glad, I'm glad you called me, yeah, cause I had no idea, so.
Appreciate it, alright.
You do?
Yeah.
I was, I was, whenever I can get that from you, I'll run down to Bettendorf.
And they deliver too, and they.
I just told the guy I'm gonna come and get it.
Um, go ju- go visit with Shelley then.
Okay, I'll probably run down this afternoon.
Yeah, go visit with Shelley, I think.
I got a guy literally waiting to put it in, so.
No, I know, that's what we're, yeah, okay, okay.
Have a good holiday.
Yeah, you too.
Thank you.
Alright, so let's take a short recess at this time. So we will reconvene our meeting at this time, and Luann, are you available to go through your business?
Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning. All I have today is calendar. Um, today, after the meeting, we tentatively had a union negotiating session, but I haven't heard anything about that. Um, we do have one budget work session scheduled for eleven thirty. Um, at four o'clock this afternoon is the McCoke River Watership Management Authorities Executive Board Meeting, uh, by Zoom for Don. Tomorrow, December thirteenth at nine AM, Don is also on, uh, Can You Make Q's Just Talk Show. And at four o'clock that afternoon is Veterans Affairs Commission Meeting, um, downstairs in the conference room for any of you that wanna go to that. Thursday, December fourteenth at ten AM is an Iowa HHS Council Meeting, um, for Jack, either in Des Moines or by Zoom. Um, eleven o'clock on Thursday is the Mississippi Valley Workforce Business Committee Meeting by Zoom for Don. And at six o'clock that evening is Limefield Bluff RC and D Meeting, um, by Zoom also for Don. Friday, December fifteenth at noon is the Jackson County Area Tourism Association Meeting by Zoom for Micah. That did get moved from Wednesday to return Thursday to Friday. Monday, December eighteenth, at three o'clock, I tentatively have a Regional Governing Board Meeting. Um, in Davenport for Jack or possibly for Lynn. Six o'clock that evening is a Together We Build Meeting for any of you that wanna go to that. And at seven PM that evening is a Jackson County Zoning Commission Meeting, um, downstairs in the committee room for any of you that want to go with that. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, December nineteenth at nine AM. And that afternoon at two o'clock is a Mississippi Valley Workforce CEO Meeting by Zoom for Don. And at five o'clock is tentatively a Conservation Board Meeting, um, in Hurstville for any of you that wanted to attend that.
Today, I wanna find the housing, a meeting with locals and Kelly and such over at one twenty-two, but if anybody wants to go and. Yeah, our personal meetings, we don't usually list on here that we go to, so if somebody wants to. I miss, I guess they'll wind us, but I have several meetings I need to go to.
Yeah, and I don't necessarily get noticed in all of those, so.
Okay, that's it?
That's it.
Thank you, any questions for Luann? Alright. Moving right along, we're down to Jim. Yep, Crocker, and our Jackson County Chief Deputy, and Andrew Long, our Jail Administrator, good morning.
Good morning, folks.
And then we're gonna talk a little bit about staffing, is that correct?
Yeah, we just wanted to address based on last week's, uh, budget talks. Just what our staffing needs, how we got there. Um, a little bit of a timeframe about that, and then some misconceptions about. St- staffing, what's, what's safe staffing for that facility? And, um, I just wanted to kinda move back to budget talks from twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, where we did have, we, we placed money in there, it got knocked down. We wanted to talk about splitting twenty-three, twenty-four into two years, uh, the year where, or the portion where in the existing jail. And then what we projected was possibly a January opening to the new facility and what staffing needs would be. We, we feel that's obviously pushed back to this spring, but we're operating under a. A budget that we think we can add some personnel from our part-time, from our PRN staff. And, and part-time staff, uh, to full-time to make this transition work better. We'd like to talk about the timeframe going into that, and then the twenty-four, twenty-five projection. Of what it'll take to maintain that staffing level. Um, first of all, we, we feel, i- if we would project, uh, a March opening. We would like to have these hires in place. In early February to allow for training and have a trained staff moving into this, we think we'll come up to. Up to our true numbers quicker if we do this, but even if we talk about existing. Uh, jail inmates being moved into the new facility, that can't be done until we have a safe. It, it, it can't be, well, they'll learn with us, it, it just doesn't work that way. We wanna provide for a, a safe professional building, house, housing mates for their safety and for ours. And do it at the proper numbers, and we, we base us all on that three, three people per shift. With the additional. And we we base us all on that three, three people per shift with the additional. We have to be supplemented by those P R Ns for some transports. Uh, we definitely understand we're gonna have to manage those transports and do it the smartest way possible. Uh, we 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 believe we are, if there's, if there's an extra deputy on, we're currently using them. We have to run somebody to the buke or wherever, we've had the sheriff run people down to Scott County. Um, where we definitely are never gonna take ourselves out of the mix, including. Starting this facility with the jail superintendent being part of a three-person ship, not separate of a three-person ship. So we'd have four on, we wanna make sure we're we're doing that, I would include myself in that. When I'm available, I wanna be part of that ship, I wanna be part of the backfill. Um, but for planning sake, I think we've provided some uh staff analysis. And some true numbers on what it takes to to staff this jail.
With some of the uh front office help, Karen and Kim being jailed or certified as uh justification. For raise increases, will they be included in the in the ship rotation at some point to a state current and justify the training?
Absolutely.
Extra expense?
Yeah, and that's uh that's been occurring, and part of that is that uh female on staff requirements. Um, in terms of bringing in somebody early, both Kim and Karen have been very good about doing that and the transport of people, so. I let Andrew talk about that a little bit, how he does that, but I I think everybody needs to be in the mix, and I think when you're a small agency like we are. Uh, you you can't uh, you can't say, oh, I don't do that. We 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 wear a lot of different hats, and um I I would use myself as chief deputy. Um, I'm probably at the age where it administrative role is smart, but I cover shifts on the road. Um, I I feel I can safely do that, I think our staffing needs demand that I do that, I can't say, no, I don't do that, so.
Yeah, there's times it takes all of us to handle a situation, no matter what it may be, I mean. We've had suicide attempts, we've had escape attempts, we've had um fights, um. It can take everybody, so we, you know, we cross-trained to that purpose of having that adequate response, um. I go back and reference an incident we had a couple months ago where um an inmate was combative. Um, to the point where they're gonna have to go in the restraint chair, um, we had to utilize pepper ball gun on him um to get compliance. As we're dealing with him in the restraint chair, and we have to check him every fifteen minutes, we have another fight break out between two other inmates. It started off joking around and turned into an actual physical fight, and that resulted in the taser deployment and ambulance being dispatched. So it's, in that instance, it took all of five, six people just to handle what was occurring then and there. So using that cross-training is important, using the deputies, using Karen and Kim. Um, it's necessary just to be able sometimes to handle an incident based on volume, based on the threat level, that kind of a thing. Um, Karen and Kim will often help fill in with transports as well, you know, if things are slowing down in the office for the day. Um, we have somebody needs to go to Buick somewhere short where it won't incur overtime, um, we utilize one of them to go do that transport, kinda help. Keep things moving efficiently and fiscally responsible.
So i- in a timeline. Um, I think it would be important now uh that we we start the recruitment process. To additional full-time people, we'd like to look at that being three immediately. Uh, but not hiring them until we can project the opening date, we we don't want them just on. On board as full-time and current costs and having maybe a heavier shift than what we need right now. Uh, until we're we're one month out, and within that, in that one month out period. We want to project having these these shifts in place, so we can be training. We're gonna be operating the facility and we're gonna be training in the facility, and then that way we can transition safely. Um, I think even for a punch list for um for for this building. I think we need to be living in it in in some fashion to make sure it's not, it's operating as it should. There's a lot of electronics in it, uh, there's a learning curve in training, there's gonna be training road people in there as well for emergency response. And we wanna be doing that at the same time, really, that we're looking at um a homicide trial and another major trial, you know, in March. So uh we are gonna have some staffing needs, I think Andrew and and Becky have French numbers enough. I think there be uh Andrew's being fiscally responsible right now to demonstrate that our that budget, the the corrections budget. Can handle moving three people up out of that P R N or part-time into full-time. In February, March, and with that anticipated opening. And then uh if we wanna make sure going into a new budget, we can maintain that and uh build one more person into it. So four additional, three immediately.
One of my questions is, you keep kinda talking how you're gonna take your P R N staff and move them to the full-time. How much additional training do they need from the P R N staff to the full-time staff, aren't they already doing some shifts?
Yeah, I, when I talk talking training, I'm talking about operational training in a new facility. In terms of, in terms of what their jail school requirements are and ongoing training they're getting and case or training, things like that. Um, I think they need to come up to up to speed as a part-time employee, but not their initial training. I'm talking about operational training in a new facility.
Okay, but we really do that until we're there, can we? How are you, how are you training them for that facility if we're not there?
Yeah, uh, you 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 have to walk through every process of it, you have to make sure your booking process. You're capable of operating that center, all the equipment works, uh, your computer system is operational. And then in terms of the control center, but every bit of that, uh, this is one of those where you don't wanna learn live. With 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 people in there that could escape, uh, well, when I hit this door, that door opens, or only hit this door. Or when you let people in, how you conduct a lockdown within that pod, everything about that uh has to be learned.
In the new building.
Yeah, yeah, it has to be learned empty.
But you have to be in that building, right?
And and by staffing those shifts, no, because for that month, we would be heavier. We would be able to have people over there operating this facility here and learning that facility in shifts. Um. I I mean, it it's beyond just the the optics of, yeah, it's a different beast. Um, the the internal operations is just, it's crazy compared to this one.
Yeah.
Um, you know, there's, there's not any electronic item over here other than the battery-powered buzzer on the wall telling you to run door checks. And now we're gonna be in a facility with cameras, um, complete door capability by control, everything with that. Um, it's it's, it's gotta be running before you put one person in there.
So does the state or anyone, the feds, uh, state, I should say, baby, do they provide uh something for training for such facilities? Um, these are like, you know, I just go back to Delaware County again, because there's one of the newest one, newer ones that we toured uh similar to ours. Um, would it pay us to have somebody head chief jailer up there come down and give you the nuts and bolts about, hey? Yours is exactly like ours, this is what we do, I don't know if it works for you, but.
And I've spent, you know, several days up in Delaware, kinda seeing their processes, um. Some stuff I agree with, some stuff I don't, you know, I think what's interesting with jails particularly is every jail runs differently. And based on need, um, you know, there's some departments where it's only deputies doing transports. There's, you know, some departments where middles take very little staffing, it's just everything runs differently. Um, based on the needs of policy procedure. Um, I think it's important that we learn from other jails that, you know, have built new jails, you know, recently. Um, we look at operations from different jails and kinda say, oh, here's what we like, here's what we don't like, but it needs to be crafted to our needs, um.
So the state don't go provide any education or resources as far as.
I'm assuming the software that you guys are buying will have uh live.
Yes.
Come through and kinda walk you through the process of this is how our software works and all that kinda stuff, so there will be some of that, uh.
Yeah, so a couple of those, they provide, I think it's two days of training. Um, with the integration of that software, so in terms of new equipment. There is training provided um by those manufacturers or providers.
Again, the state does not provide any training of any sort or.
Not in terms of moving to a new jail, no.
Uh, maybe not even to a new facility, but yeah, I I I what I'm trying to say, but I would think that that they would provide some type of. Assistance to a facility like that.
The typically, there's kind of a, and this has been court-related through a lot of stuff. Oftentimes, there's kind of a hands-off approach to jails, because again, historically, the courts have kinda seen this as a hands-off issue. They don't wanna get involved in the aspect of jails unless it's something major, um, basically constitutional. Um, same how like the state will not turn around and tell you, you have to have X number of officers. But uh they won't tell you, you need to have X number of officers, X number of inmates, they won't do that, they'll come back on the same, this is what the standard says. In chapter fifty, they won't give you that direct answer, um, and again, it's just historically, the courts, the government. Has had a hands-off approach to corrections, so there's very little resources from the state in terms of that. Um, Dolbert Longley, jail inspector, you know, he's good at answering questions we have and giving advice. But he won't tell you outside of this is what the law's parameters are, because of course, it's again, it's his liability there. So the state will give you basic guidance on what is required lawfully, but they won't go much farther.
So when you're asking for two to three people now immediately to be identified, so they can be hired about a month out. Um, and then you said maintained going into the next cap fiscal year at four?
Yeah, we we believe it takes four to come up to that staff, uh, that staffing of three per shift. And then from there, you need the backfill of the of the part-time, the existing, and then the P R Ns. It doesn't eliminate any P R Ns, we still need to keep identifying the P R Ns and hiring them. Um, you know, uh, a couple things with that, they don't cost us more money uh other than training and use and equipment. Um, but then they service that bullpen, and if we have attrition, then, you know, we can move people up a little bit more seamlessly. But yeah, the immediate staffing needs where we would ask for three now, and I think we could, we can do that within this budget. But then uh to maintain four part-time, so three now, one additional, four part-time, twenty-four, twenty-five.
I think I can speak for me, I don't, I can't speak for the other two, but if I had a look of shock on the face when we're going through your budget. It's because between you guys, Together We Build and the fair, we need to come up with about one point four million dollars that we don't have.
Yeah.
And so there's just some big numbers being thrown around, it isn't that I can't empathize, or again, I agree, you guys are gonna need. I see everything you're talking about, I I see it, it's just how do we pay for it? And there's gonna be some give and take.
Yeah.
And that's what we gotta come up with, the the secondary notes today was just asked, what are you guys gonna make decisions on what we wanna do, and it's like. We haven't even got through the book once yet.
Yeah.
And so, um, as far as I'm concerned, I I get it, I agree, I think we'll probably need to get to that level, it's just figuring out how to be paid in order to get there. Um, because it just can't be, here's a bunch more dollars, you look back three years ago, your budget's up almost a million dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Already, now we add on this, that's almost doubling the budget, so. We need to figure out how to justify that, just make sure we're doing our due diligence, dispended correctly.
Okay.
Now, that's my opinion, um.
I agree, I mean, you know, we're going up that much, you know, one, we can't afford to go up that much. Obviously, so what can we, where can we ship from here to there? You know, to try to.
The saving grace that I see is the fact that we did the upper visiting, because that's gonna be a tremendous source of revenue. Because I think these staffing requirements were gonna be whether we were at twenty-six or fifty-two.
Absolutely.
So the saving grace is the fact that we now have that revenue stream, and we're gonna use it to no end, because. The more you can make, the make easier this transition gets to maintain these staffing levels, you know. Now, if we stick it around fifteen or twenty people and we don't utilize that, it's gonna get real tight.
Oh, absolutely.
So.
And and I, I guess that would be one of the big goals about uh today is. At least to get past the hurdle of what, what? We believed or what was historically um given to you for information, uh, some of that information was was wrong. And uh we just wanna make sure that.
I don't wanna say wrong, I'll say right at that time, because it's completely different.
Yeah.
And there's always difference in parameters and perspectives and all that kinda stuff, things change over time, so I don't wanna say, well, they just. That what, it is what it is, and this is where we are, and so everything set up to this point is cut and rope.
Okay.
So, we are, this is where we're at, this is where we need how to figure out to get, get, keep going into the, into the future.
So, um, I guess we've heard it. Is there something that you, uh, there's nothing on the agenda for action, correct? You're just here for information, for informational purposes, is that correct?
I would like you, if I could ask, I heard a kind of a game plan, like, okay, in February, we'd like to hire. Two or three people, and if we're gonna shoot, let's say, we're shooting for a March. Or don't even say March opening, say if we're shooting for X month opening. Three thirty days prior, or six forty-five days prior, we would like to do this. Hire and give us kind of a timeline, now, don't fix it on March, but just, you know, say if we're opening by X day. We would, we would like a timeframe of how to proceed, so we get an idea, okay, you wanna hire two or three now, we get them up. You talk about P R Ns, you talk about part-time people, I wanna see, and I guess I'll talk to you, cause you're the jail administrator, you're, um. Your goal is twelve full-time, how many part-time, how many P R N? Because when you say we need the twelve to make sure we adequately staff all shifts, three people. But we want somebody part-time, we saw, and we still want the same amount of part-time, same amount of P R N. To me, if part-time, if full-time's not working, somebody else is, and that's if part-time, if full-time's not working, let's say they take a holiday. They're still paying double because now you gotta fill and all that kinda, so what's the staffing actually look at? And I know it's probably been there in the past, but, you know, as we go into this, what's your timeframe? And what is where you're gonna, that's where we're, we're shooting for.
And the one thing to P R N is, it it's truly our saving grace as far as staffing levels, you know, they fill in, they help, um, they don't get benefits. Um, the reason we have to have a fairly good-sized pool of that is.
Just make sure they're available.
Right, I mean, you have people work Monday through Friday.
Most of that is part-time and P R N.
Part-time is guaranteed twenty hours a week, and they receive benefits prorated upon how much they worked in the last like twelve months. Becky could correct me on that, but I'm pretty confident that's the the way that works, so basically. Their vacation and stuff is tabulated based on the percentage of what they worked compared to a full-time person.
And I'm gonna look at it, this, if you need twelve full-time people, and I need six part-time people, and you want six or eight. P R Ns just to make your scheduling job easy, to me, I'm saying that's a crap load of training budget.
Mm-hmm.
That's a crap load of uniforms, and that's a crap load, just in case I maybe sorta come to someday wanna work in the jail kinda stuff. And in which case, no, we gotta trim it down, if you got twelve and maybe six. I, at one point, I think I remember you guys said you wanted twelve full-time and nine part-time.
And and when we said nine there, we were referring to P R, so, um.
Well, that's where I get confused with part-time and P R N, so, the the, I didn't hear that, I heard nine full or twelve full-time. And nine part-time, which if that's P R N, but then all of a sudden, there's this whole other cat of subcategory of. Our part-timer, which you're actually getting paid some kind of benefit and all that stuff, which to me calculates out into extra expense.
Right, yeah, no, we, I think currently we have one part-time position, and the remainder of our part-time people are P R N.
Uh, so if you could please explain the P R.
Right. Uh, Deputy Grocker, last week when you were like, we need three part-time deputies, and I'm like, well, good lord, that seems more expensive than one full-time deputy.
Yeah.
You're like, we'll take that, we'll take both, no, actually, I would like to see what's the benefit-cost ratio of one full-time deputy versus the three part-time. And you can't have both, at least right now, but you know, and and it's, you know, because to me. A full-time deputy, maybe they give you, you know, is that more advantageous, or is it the part-time, because there, you know, that's where. I I'd be more interested in what's the biggest overall bang for our buck.
No, and I agree, cause sometimes that number tells you, you're 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 historical, how you're using these people tells you where you need to go, and you're. Um, the the P R N, um. Gen, so that's how they come up with PRN. And it, I think that comes from the nursing world in terms of. Um a cadre of employees designed to backfill existing numbers without incurring costs. Without incurring benefits. And um so, so with that. We asked for more two years ago and received. And we went from, I think, four to six and with uh it being capped at nine. But generally, other than the training and the uniforms, they just don't cost you. But you need that, that true bullpen that when you start making the phone calls, somebody's available. Because these are all people that generally have either a full-time job. Or they have a family situation that they can't have a full-time job, but they can have this on call.
But that's where I would just like, where you got the full-time, then you got the part-time. And they're designated how many and how they fit in and all that stuff. But then you have the PR. I get the PR, I get it. But then to me, if you got twelve full-timers, do you really need part-time or can you just have PRNs to backfill? You know, that, you know, that kinda stuff because um. If you have all of them, it almost looks like you more than doubled your Manning staff. And with that, there's implication of budgetary implications and all that. We're just, we're trying to just balance it.
I know, sometimes, just coming from the medical side of it, your PRNs or your part-time staff. It may be more beneficial to have two part-time staff than one full-time. Because maybe like your hole that you got is, again, coming from the medical side, weekend holes. Well, you can't really say you're gonna work every weekend, but you're not, I would think. So if you got two part-times, it's, you got one weekend, you got one weekend. That fills your whole staff of weekend type of view. So.
And part of the reason.
And it's a guarantee, you know, they have to be on the schedule. I mean, I would like to see you guys get some type of. But I don't know. Like, I could plan in my ambulance wise, I could plan my schedule out the whole year. Because we did a six-week rotation of the schedule. It wasn't that I got to go to Andrew or Chad or whoever and said, well, I only wanna work these days, this week and this day, this week. It wasn't automatic. So it makes your scheduling a lot, one, a lot easier. You know, they need a day off. That's your vacation days. That way you don't get people building up sixty million hours in vacation days. Because we reworked their schedule so they don't have to take any. But, you know.
Yeah. And, and part of the reason for the need of that bank of PRN of, something that's just true in the field of corrections is. You're gonna hire people, especially as we're hiring PRN. You're gonna hire people with the goal of going on the street. Or you're gonna hire people that, myself being a prime example, I worked a year and a half here PRN. And then took a full-time job in Clinton because we didn't have it here. So that's just the reality of this and always will be the reality of this. Is you're gonna be hiring people that mainly, you know, and that's why we have to have that bank of availability, um you know. Recruitment of officers on the street has gotten harder and harder. There's, you know, decreases in interest there. So it's kind of a. We're hiring these people with the understanding, you know, we wanna build them and hopefully keep them, but if not. We have to understand it's also a PRN position. So that's why you have to have that bank to be able to not be in crisis and more if you start losing people, so.
Can I interrupt here?
Yeah.
So at the end of the day, what the reality of this is, is. Yeah, you can eliminate PRN, but that means you have to hire so many more full-time to not even have a need for the PRN. Some counties don't have PRN, but that's because they have a plethora of full-time workers that they don't even need the PRN. Um the PRN works for us because I don't imagine we'll ever hire enough full-time people to cover everything. So that's what makes them so necessary. Unless we wanna hire enough full-time people to where we don't even need PRN. But then you get into a situation where you may have. More um extra people on the payroll that you don't need necessarily. So the PRN is kind of your stop the bleed.
To me, I don't have a problem with PR and I'm just trying to understand the difference between part-time and PRN. If you got full four, twelve full-timers going. And you have six or eight PRN, you can have up to nine. What's the purpose of the part-time? So that's what I, that's just, I'm looking for what your Manning document looked like and what you're trying to go for. Because you can't have twelve. Six and nine. You know, all of a sudden, that's twenty-seven people, you know, and, and we can't afford that right now. Because we will hear from everybody if we do, because every taxes are going up and all that kinda stuff. So that's what we're looking for. It's just a better graph to what the Manning document's gonna look like and how and why. And if you get to twelve. Is that many of each other subset category required or how can that shift or change? And I get the more PRNs, the better. I get, I get that, but then part-timers.
We're not saying, Brett, to cut out PRNs by no me, you know, it's just we need to have a. Good handle on management of where we're at or employees and. You know, like any place, you don't want extra people, not AK, not just sitting around, but.
Cluttering up the joint.
But, you know, we wanna make sure that we got the staffing that we need to everybody stay safe and everybody work together. But yet we gotta keep it in a good perspective.
We worked through some formulas um for jail staffing that's provided from, what's the national um.
Institute of Corrections.
National Institute of Corrections and um the numbers we can, is based upon. How many people are needed first of all to operate a ship and we identify three. Uh and then from there, the formula takes into account vacations, sick and training days uh and other personal days. And, and then you come up with actual hours worked or available for work. And then you base that on their formulas and we came, we came up with fifteen point six. Of which twelve were identifying as full-time employees and arrest supplemented. And, and based upon what the sheriff's saying, um rather than say, hey, we want fifteen point six employees. Whereas we're saying, we want twelve full-time and then we wanna make sure we have that bank of people to backfill, so.
Eighty-hour pay periods.
So they're on twelve-hour shifts. Um we, we set our policy with um with Becky regarding overtime. For full-time employees, it's anything over the regularly scheduled work hours. So since we run twelve-hour shifts, they get paid eighty-four hours every two weeks. Um all which is straight pay, based on, like I said again, anything over regularly scheduled work hours. Um part-time and PRN fall under the rule of anything over forty hours in a week. So. In theory, it's a lot simpler to schedule a full-time person. If we have to move something around, we're shorthanded, whatever. I can have them work five hours one week, I'm sorry, five days one week and to the next without incurring overtime. So even though they worked sixty hours the first week and twenty-four the next, we're not paying them overtime rate. It's maintaining there. Whereas if we have a part-time uh PRN person and they're going over forty in any week. They might have, you know, sixty-one week and zero the next. We're gonna pay them twenty hours overtime, cause it was in that week period. So that's where full-time is a little bit more movable.
Yeah, so if you think about three per shift and there's four shifts, two shifts per day, six AM to six PM, six PM to six AM. Twelve will, is the bare minimum, cause that's twelve employees, three on each one of those shifts, four shifts. To cover the full-time job period. That allows for no days off, nobody can get sick. Nobody can get injured. We cannot have any, we don't have anybody, let's say, you know, with one of these major trials coming up. We have nothing left to pull from, except for that's where our PRN come in and save us. Now. I don't know, maybe, maybe you guys are asking why we need the part-time over the PRN. But one advantage to the part-time, and Becky could probably better explain this in more detail than me even. But one of the advantages of part-time is, is because they're part-time. Uh I think we schedule them twenty hours in a pay period and then they get partial benefits. But one advantage to that is. Is we schedule them and that's when they are to work. Compared to a disadvantage to a PRN is, is, oh, I'm gonna be out of town for a week. Or I'm working overtime at my full-time regular job, which puts, you know, food on my table. I cannot come in that week or whatever. You know, PRNs are at the mercy of when can they work? Um based on what their full-time job is and what they've got going on, you know, with their families or whatever they have going on in their lives. A part-timer and, and in my mind, I guess, it's okay to have a part-timer or two, but I would prefer to have more PRN. But I have to recognize that one of the advantages to a part-timer is that you can actually schedule them. So when. Out of those twelve employees in the pay period, when they're gonna take a day off. Then you plug your part-timer in there. If there's a transport that's gonna take, you know, so many hours uh or a full day or whatever it is. Or, you know, you just plug them in automatically, cause they know that's their part-time job. Does that make sense or?
Yeah.
Okay.
So just for clarification and for those who cannot view this, uh the comments are coming from Jeshia County Sheriff Brent Kilber. Anybody had any question, who was, who was giving us information there?
Okay, um we will get that timeframe, the staffing level, uh we'll break that down, we'll put it on paper. And then we'll add what that month before it looks like with the training schedule in a un- uh unpopulated facility. So.
Well, we had to have some kind of a plan.
If I could make one more comment?
Have a good holiday or whatever. Let me see you.
I guess I just, I know everybody's uh, you know, everybody's in the same boat. Everybody's always asking uh for more resources in their budget and stuff. And not trying to take away from anybody else, but I guess I would ask that you consider. That law enforcement in the community is one of the essential services that you have to provide per the code. So I guess just consider that. Um I guess when you decide how much weight you put into something uh and where you divide it in the community, so.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep, bye.
All right, so I think we're down to, uh. So anyway, we did have that we were all involved with our District Six meeting uh Wednesday, last Wednesday. And just a little bit on that, uh it involves fourteen counties, we are including District Six. So it went well, we had good attendance. Um we had good legislative updates, Jamie Cashman and Luke Speakin. Uh Rachel was there for education from the state level. We did, uh you know, we, we were a little disappointed with the legislation. I know they're all busy. Um for as, for as attendance goes, but uh no, it all worked out good. And I mean, we were all there and I thought we had a. Really nice presentation from our own, very own uh. Uh right here with Cogan and Josh, Josh Walt and Nathan Jones presented on the uh. Prosperity, prosperity, eastern Iowa, uh Prairie Creek and the, and the water quality and collaboration between city and county. So. It don't happen a lot, city and county collaboration and partnership, so. Um I think it was a good, a good presentation, well-received by everyone and uh worked well. Any other comments on that meeting?
I thought it was very good. Again, you got some good networking between the counties going and what do you need?
Uh we met at ECA, kind of a common. So it was kind of centralized, not really centralized, but uh. And I was lucky enough to get voted president of District Six, so that'll. Lucky me. Motion to second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye. I opposed, motion carried by the meeting adjourned.